Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It's a little after nine o'clock. Today is Tuesday, October the 11th. We're in the Century Dream Room of the Ralph H. Walton Junior Justice Center at 1200 West Pearl Street in Granbury, Texas. I want to remind everybody today, we have no service awards and no special presentations. So if you want to speak on a topic, you must fill out a public participation form. So we're going to get into them right away. And if you don't have your public participation form on the open mic, and I have three so far, you're going to get passed over. The same thing is about the miscellaneous. When we get through with everything else and we get to miscellaneous, if you don't have your miscellaneous form filled out, you're not going to get to be heard. So please, please, if you want to speak, now's the time to fill out your public participation form. And it's a good thing that we have our good backup here. Is Pastor Daniel Kraft here this morning? Well, Pastor McMahon, it looks like the show is yours. We always have a standby here, you know that?
It's a pastor's dream to have everyone stand when he comes up. Pray with me, please. Father, in Jesus' name, we come before you to claim your promise in 2 Chronicles 7:14. If my people, who are called by my name, shall humble themselves, pray, seek, crave, and require of necessity my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, forgive their sin, and heal their land. We're your people, Lord, called by your name. Thank you for hearing our prayers and moving by your Spirit in our land. There's many bad problems happening, and men's hearts are failing because of fear. And Lord, Jesus spoke of discerning the signs of time. With the Holy Spirit as our helper, we watch and we pray. Our desire is that a spirit of humility be released in us. Thank you for quiet and meek spirits, because we know that the meek shall inherit the earth. Search us and know our hearts, Lord. Try us and know our thoughts, right now. See if there's any wicked way in us, and lead us in your way everlasting. Thank you for forgiving our sins of judging and complaining and criticizing each other. Cleanse us, wash us clean, so we'll be whiter than snow. Touch our lips with coals from your altar, so that we may pray prayers that actually prevail and avail much for all men and women. Lord, our hearts desire is to release rivers of living waters for the healing of our nation. And it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
You would please join me in the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, Texas, Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, indivisible.
Thank you very much. And now that there are no special presentations and no service awards, we're going to get right now into the citizens' comments at large. And the first speaker is Tom McElroy. Mr. McElroy. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, gentlemen. I'd kind of like to start this thing with thanking you all very much for what you do for the county. Pretty much a thankless job, I'm sure, in a lot of ways. And I, for one, appreciate what you all do out there, pretty much day in and day out, to keep things running. It's been my observation that this quiet little county of ours is growing by leaps and bounds, has been for a while, and it seems like we've gotten a spurt here lately of even more with a bunch of new houses under construction, more people moving into the county. You can't hardly blame them, but we may not actually really like that trend, but it's progress, and that's kind of what happens in this country. Along with that, you know, more people, more cars, more traffic, and on the darker side of that, more crime. And that's why I'm here to address you today, to bring up the concerns from the community about our coverage with the Sheriff's Department. I'm sure you all know that Hood County's 425 square miles for apparently four officers or deputies patrolling during the daytime. That's about 100 square miles per deputy out there that they're trying to oversee and keep the peace in, and heaven help them if they need backup. Apparently, the county's been losing some deputies to other law enforcement agencies that pay better. We really don't want Hood County Sheriff's Department, I'm sure, to become a training facility for other law enforcement agencies. That certainly is not cost-effective. A graduated pay scale, something in writing, positive to give these deputies something to look forward to as they mature in their jobs and acquire years on the job, would certainly give them something to look forward to and a good reason to stick around. You know, it's always a great thing when you've got deputies out there watching over the county, helping with issues that pop up, to have people that know where they're going, know the people in the community, and know how the community works. And every time we bring in new deputies, they haven't got a clue, for the most part, of where anything is, or what's going on, or what's been going on in the county. So having guys that have been here for a while and on the job for a while can make a great difference in that. We certainly have a lot of growth. There is a little history, as you all know, of illicit things going on way out in the county. And, you know, it's cleaned up a bunch over the last few years, but we certainly don't need it to be going backwards. So if you all can see your way to, you know, get the Sheriff's Department back on track with retention of officers or deputies, and giving them something to look forward to, I feel would be a great advantage for the county and the citizens of the county in particular. We need to pay these people like their life depends on it, and our life depends on it. And then on top of that, the issue with the volunteer fire department, those people have worked their fannies off this year on fires, you know, Toler, Lipan, all those big fires and everything, and I think we need to be looking into a different situation for firefighters also. And I really appreciate the time to speak with you, and I hope you all have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Mr. Jose Gomez.
Good morning. First off, I want to thank you guys. The previous speaker said, I know that's a thankless job as the husband of a president of a HOA, so I know how that can be. And a lot of times, things get misconstrued and stuff like that, and that's all, you know, that's by the wayside. What I'm here today is to help ensure that you guys understand that as a citizen of the county, that we have heard and seen, in the four years that I've lived here, I've yet to see a pay raise for our Sheriff's Department, okay? And to me, that just seems a little sad. I have worked in the federal government for 35 years now. And as it was stated earlier, a graduated pay scale really does help, something that's in writing, something they can see, something that they have, some kind of, you know, encouragement. Most of the Sheriff's Department, I think I pretty much, I've talked to, I've known, I know them on a personal level, and I can tell you that most of the deputies that I've talked to, they don't want to leave Hood County. They really don't. They love working here, they love the community, you know. My neighborhood just recently had a national shootout. We had a huge turnout, huge turnout, okay? We love our law enforcement here, we love our first responders here, and I think it's time now to give them that pay that they deserve. If it's property taxes, then I'm really confused, because just this past year, my own property taxes went up by 50%. So I don't understand why we have not given them a pay raise yet. So I'm begging you, I'm asking you, on their behalf, please, give these deputies the money that they deserve for the job that they do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Judge, I know we can't respond to this thing, but we are supposed to speak if we see something that's untrue. We have given raises to the deputies. It was just said that we haven't. Our information says since 2017, we've had a 40% increase in the Sheriff's Office for wages. In addition, this year, in the budget, we gave all the deputies a 5% increase. So I just want to be sure that record was straight. Thanks.
Okay. Next, citizens' comment at large, Steve Brett.
I want to say good morning, and then thank you all for everything that you all do for the county. I've been a part of Hood County basically for all of my life, 62 years. My grandparents lived here whenever I was born, and so I visited here. They lived in Thorpe Springs, so whenever I, we moved to Fort Worth, I grew up in Fort Worth, and so I've spent a lot of time back and forth out here. I've seen it change over the years. I've seen many things that happen. I do know that there's a lot of stuff that goes on in Hood County, in the city and Hood County, and in the schools, that is generally controlled by Sheriff's Department and the police, and they try and control the laws and enforce the laws and make everybody equal. And I would like to see the Sheriff's Department get the compensation that they need to be able to keep the people that are doing a good job. If we have bad officers, we need to get rid of them. But if we have good officers, they need to be compensated accordingly, so that they can be able to make a living and survive in this world that we're living in right now. All the taxes have gone up, everything else has gone up. Whenever my, I don't know what the total is, but I know that most of the properties in Hood County went up at least 10% this year in what they had to pay in taxes. And I don't know how much the, you all's department, the county gets out of it. I know the school district gets a lot of it. I think the school district should compensate their resource officers accordingly. If they, and from what I understand, they've lost a lot of resource officers, they need to be paying for the resource officers. That's their security. They need to be responsible for their own security. You have a member of your board that stood up in a church and took someone else's life because he was trying to save the people that he was charged to protect. He wasn't charged by pay, he was charged by spirit. And because he did that, a lot of other people lived and survived because of it, and they're here today to talk about it. All I'm asking you to do is do that for the people of Hood County. Provide them with the financial support for their officers, so that they can take care of all the people in this county. And if you can do that, I believe it will help our sheriff, who I believe has the support of the majority of the people in this county, and I think that he does a fine job. He just needs to help with the money to be able to get the guys that can do the job. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, gentlemen. Nice to see you again. How are you today?
Good.
Great. My name's Lisa Bordeaux, and I'm here on behalf of the Comanche Pete Coalition. And pretty much, for those of you that don't know me yet, we are against a development that's coming in over on, off of Neary Road. So I'm just here today because I can come to talk to you again about publicly. So I just wanted to set a couple things straight. I want to go back to the original plat that was filed. If we recall, we talked about the plat being filed by an entity that didn't own the land. I do think that that plat needs to be corrected, and I'm sure the title company is probably going to be aware of that discrepancy very soon. The other thing is, we had talked about wells, and that the Opportunity Water District had recommended that wells, properties be five acres for wells. The board had vehemently was opposed to it, and an argument was made that, well, if you had 10 acres of land and you had three children, you couldn't divide that land between the three children, because then they wouldn't have five acres each, which would prevent them from putting in a well. However, that limitation does not apply to veterans or transfers to family members. So you could have 20 acres, and you can divide it any way you want, but the family members are not subject to the well limitation. So I just wanted to get that straight. The other interesting thing is, I've given you some paperwork today. Three Ring Jilly bought all the land. Three Ring Jilly sold to Oakwater Ranch Development LLC. And the argument that you all had for approving the plat was that no new roads were being built, all the lots fronted the public road that already exists. However, in your exemption section, there is a provision, and I believe it's 1.6A2, and unless I'm reading it incorrectly, these are in the development regulations, let me make that clear. If the property is further transferred to a third party that is not related to the person that platted the lots, the development regulations would apply, and they would have to follow all the subdivision rules. And that has been done. Three of the lots have been sold to an entity that does not appear connected to the declarant. Yep, I am. I'm reading it. It's interpretation, Clint.
You're talking about the exemptions, you're looking at it wrong.
Perhaps, but I could be looking at it correctly as well.
No, because they went through the plating process.
I love talking with you, Clint, come on up.
It went through the plating process. It was a final plat without.
The comment section, I don't think we're into this, Judge, to tell you the truth.
Well, you said we could correct them if it was the wrong information. It went through the plating process without a preliminary needed. She's talking about the exemptions. That is not correct information.
I don't, no, I don't, I think I disagree with you respectfully, because it says that the exemption applies unless the property is transferred or otherwise distributed to individuals who are not related to the owner within the third degree of contiguity or affinity. And that's what happened when three of the lots were conveyed to JL Construction Services. Anyway, I appreciate your time. We're here today. Mr. Cotton will be talking to you shortly. We will continue this in the appropriate manner, and, but our goal is right now to table any further development of that property, because I think it needs to be addressed. For all the reasons you have, the development regulations, water, sewer, roads, safety, fire, and I don't think it's being addressed. I think it's getting skirted around, because the 26 lots are being developed along the public road, and I think there's more to it. And I also understood that you all didn't like things developed in phases, and here we go. So I thank you for your time, gentlemen. Mr. Cotton will be talking with you, and if you'll make the time, we appreciate it. Judge, gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, Dr. Harold Granik.
Judge and commissioners, thank you. I'm speaking personally in response to comments about me in this open forum from Ms. Christine Lefwitch on September 13th of this year. The more I'm speaking to the issue of dissemination of half-truths, misinformation, and people who take advantage of, take on government responsibility and utilize their position for their own personal agenda or personal advantage. Subsequent to Mrs. Lefwitch's comments, Commissioner Eagle read into the minutes a single document for purportedly full disclosure sake. In a different venue moderated by Michael Lang, the husband of Katie Lang, who is my opponent for county clerk in the upcoming November election, Ms. Lefwitch and others pontificated about the history and significance of my case. But relevant to full disclosure, in which Commissioner Eagle believes, and myself being a resident of Precinct 4 and other fellow Precinct 4 residents, we would appreciate verification that when he filed for reelection in Precinct 4, he was indeed a resident of Precinct 4 in compliance with state law. Commissioner Eagle claims an address, whether it's even livable, as a, in Precinct 4 in compliance with state law. Commissioner Eagle claims an address that his son, Republican Precinct Chair Matthew Eagle, also claimed in such a small dwelling. It must be a very crowded thing. But Commissioner Eagle, in full disclosure, could alleviate the questions of this purported to his purported constituents by simply giving utility reports in compliance with state law for the six months prior to his registering. For the position and avoid revealing, or he may be just using his position to avoid revealing the truth of this case. Further, in the interest of full disclosure, Commissioner Eagle could explain the circumstances of this photograph, which he might want to use in his election posters. But returning to the issue of abusive position, I would like to recall the history in this county in 2015 of Mrs. Lang, who refused to fulfill the duties as county clerk to issue certain marriage licenses in spite of a Supreme Court ruling. That defiance cost the taxpayers of Hood County more than $44,000. And shortly thereafter, David Eagle intonated that Hood County should fight all the way to the Supreme Court, even if it cost the county a million dollars. And presumably, the Supreme Court would have then reversed their own decision under the weight of Mr. Eagle's legal acumen. Does it stop there? No. Commissioner Eagle, having harassed our second election administrator, Michelle Carew, because he did not like how she was handling the elections, which was in compliance, according to the testimony from the counsel of the Texas Secretary of State. This after our previous election commissioner had fled to an adjacent county due to similar treatment. Then Mrs. Lang used her position to convene the election commission with a litany of accusations against election administrator Carew, and attempts to have her fired, as Ms. Lang, in a power grab, could then assume control of the elections of Hood County. Happily, the election commission eventually overruled Mrs. Lang's complaints.
I think you're talking untruths. You're not being true.
And only two of which were deemed to be appropriate to the view of our county. Attorney Matt Mills, according to Attorney Matt Mills, fundamentally, we have found a third, happily, we have found the third elections administrator, the cost to the taxpayers of Hood County, an additional $10,000. These endeavors of county clerk Lang brought embarrassment to Hood County and to Granbury, a county that prides itself on the welcoming of visitors. I hope we can use some good horse sense and work together in the good of the county and the citizens of Hood County. Let us all have a better vision for Hood County. Thank you for your indulgence.
Thanks, doctor. All right, that concludes the open comments at large. Okay? All right, now that brings us to the consent agenda. Does anybody, any commissioner wish to pull or discuss anything on the consent agenda? If not, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve the consent agenda. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in agreement, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Now we get in no road ops, Mr. Lenny, and now we get only one item in development, Mr. Clint Head.
Morning, Judge, morning commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
Today we have one final plat. It's a Slimmons addition, Lot 1, Block 1, and Precinct 1 to discuss and consider. This property is located at 7520 Peluxi Highway in Toler. This final plat is located in Road Corridor District in Precinct 1, and will be creating a 6.20 acres lot out of the Joseph Dome Survey, Abstract Number 145. It's known as Lot 1, Block 1. This lot will be served by well and onsite sewage facilities. There are no streets proposed to be constructed with this final plat. The lot will be access on the existing farm, the Market Highway 51 South, Peluxi Highway. Staff has reviewed this final plat. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Do I hear appropriate motion?
Yeah, Judge, I make a motion that we approve the final plat of Slimmons addition, Lot 1, Block 1.
A motion was made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the final plat of Slimmons addition, Lot 1, Block 1, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Head. Okay, financial, Ms. Becky Kidd, county auditor.
Good morning, Judge, commissioners. We have two payments to approve, fiscal year '22 and fiscal year '23. Fiscal year '22 is $535,104.87. Fiscal year '23, $867,704.52. You've also been given a spreadsheet with both years for payments over $10,000. Are there any questions?
You recommend paying the bills?
Absolutely, pay these bills.
Okay. Okay. Do I hear an appropriate?
Judge, I'll make the motion to pay the bills for fiscal year 2022 in the amount of $535,104.87. And in addition, paying the bills for the full year 2023, or fiscal year 2023, of
Second. A motion made by Commissioner Cotton to approve both fiscal years 2022 and 2023 in the amount stated into the record, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
Okay, I have a few more things.
Please.
As soon as I get this done, I have to leave and go to a conference in Denton. So on item number two, you're taking this money out of Fund 101. That's wonderful. We need to utilize that fund.
Okay.
Item number nine, Fund 55 is perfectly wonderful. Item number 10, I would prefer you use Fund 101. I have visited with Jay in regards to this, and there is no issue paying for it out of Fund 101. We need to utilize that money for things of this nature. So instead of Fund 55 on item 10, if we could please use Fund 101.
Thank you very much.
Any questions, gentlemen?
No? You may be excused. Go learn something in Denton, please.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Be careful and be safe, and be sure to come back by Friday, okay? Okay. Okay, now, under miscellaneous, item number one, discuss and take appropriate action to approve the sole source letter from Archive Social, Inc., for archival of Hood County's social media accounts. Mr. Owen Orkut, yes, sir.
Good morning, Judge and commissioners. So what started as trying to get this letter approved, ended up we had some cables crossed, and it wasn't 100% necessary. However, the sole source letter was never actually introduced into record, and usually whenever we have these sole source letters that aren't in record, it does make it difficult for purchasing to go through and, you know, find some evidence that it was at one point approved. So essentially, I'm bringing it up here, so that way it's in record, so that Glenn can have a little bit of an easier time when we come around to the next budget cycle, to, you know, understand that we had this letter and all that other fun stuff.
Okay.
And just to add, we have been using Archive Social for three years now.
Right, since 20... Right, since 2019, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so this is, we're doing this kind of for three years ago, because not, because currently, they're not a sole source provider.
Correct. They're not a sole source provider currently. However, once we're done with this Tyler project, one of the things we're probably going to be looking at in IT is generally, we like to go through and kind of review our services, see what else, what's available, what's new and all that. However, right now, with the Tyler migration, it's a little difficult, and we'll also have to plan from transferring that data from a service we already use to a new service, if we're going to do that.
So IT recommends that we still stay with Archive?
Correct. At least, you know, for this year until we have more adequate time to research what else is out there and plan for moving if we do move.
Okay.
Glenn, you all right with the sole service, sole source?
Yes. So, yeah, this was originally from 2019, and when the renewals come up, you know, we look at what was the original authorization for the purchase, and we couldn't find where this had actually gone through court. So to make sure we're properly documented, we recommended that the court approve it so that we have proper documentation and our ducks are in a row.
Wow, this is a murky area. I don't know as though I'm real comfortable with opining on something from three or four years ago.
Well, when the renewals come up, we always, well, when any purchase comes up, we, we ask, you know, what is, what is authorization behind this purchase? And this is one that we couldn't verify. Normally, with software, we do renew, but it was basically how the paperwork was marked that we searched for the sole source, which should have been documented. It wasn't documented from 2019. So it's best to have those, those things documented. Normally, and actually, this is a matter of policy. This is not a matter of local government code, because it is a fairly small amount. Normally, what I would have done, had I been here at the time, was probably, you know, searched out any other sources, if there were, or, you know, which I don't, you know, I don't know at that time whether there was or not, but they did produce a letter, which, should be acknowledged by the court.
What's the small amount you're talking about?
I think the renewal this year is like 4,000, between 4,000 and 5,000. So it's, you know, but it is an important software that, you know, normally, you don't just switch up, you normally don't quote out software every year, you know, unless there's a major reason to change. But, but, you know, we do look back on what was the original authorization for the purchase. And so we wanted that to be documented in the records.
Is there any problem with this?
No.
No, sir.
And if we do this this time, then we can, you can, you're going to go ahead and research it and be more prepared next time, next year, when this comes up again? Or is this a three-year contract again?
No, this is a year-to-year agreement. And so next time we come up, we do have some other vendors that we're going to look at and either go with them or go with a normal bid-out process instead of a sole source letter.
So we can justify the sole source, right? And then next year, you're going to spend a little time and look into this with other sources?
Yes, sir.
Your opinion, if you, have you changed now, you'd have, wouldn't be a good thing for you?
No. If we had to change right now, we'd have to go through and I'd have to pull out all of the archives of the data, depending on what kind of a format they're going to give it to me in, and make sure that I can either import that data into a new service or find somewhere that I could keep it for retention. But the problem is, is let's say somebody submits an open records request against our social media accounts. Through that service, I can search and find that stuff fairly easily. If I have to export them all as PDFs, it's going to take a long time to go through there because it's recording comments, posts, everything from pretty much all of the county's social media accounts across Facebook and Twitter.
Any other questions or comments? Do I hear appropriate motion?
I move that we approve the sole source letter for Archive Social for archival for Hood County's social media accounts.
Second. Mr. Wilson has made the motion to approve the sole source letter from Archive Social for archival of Hood County for social media accounts, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
May.
All right. Motion carries four to one. All right. Thank you, gentlemen, both.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Item number two, consider and take appropriate action to approve and authorize a county judge to accept the quote from Nucor Building Systems to build a storage facility for the Mobile Command Vehicle and other mobile county assets. The cost of this project not to exceed $100,000, which includes the construction by Nucor, the dirt work by County Road Operations, and electrical work by County Facility Maintenance. Proposed paying from the Emergency Management 101 account, and you just heard Becky Kidd said that's the account that she would suggest paying the money from. And we have here our Fire Marshal, Mr. Jeff Young. Yes, sir.
Judge, Commissioners, so basically, this is a, a storage facility to store all of our mobile assets. So this is everything from the command vehicle, the book bus, whenever it gets built, the sheriff's MRAP. We'll have an additional seven covered parking area spots so that we can park all of the trailers for the disaster response, emergency management, dive team, the ag trailer, and then still have a couple spots left over.
So it's something that you say is needed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We've got a lot of money in those resources. I'd like to have them protected.
Yeah, and we had talked about, because three of these spots or enclosures for the MRAP, the Bookmobile and the Mobile Command, and we discussed that a little bit about how about just coverage, just building a carport or whatever and saving, saving a little money that way. But the security of the matter and getting those things protected behind closed doors and everything seems to, seems to make sense. And I did do some checking around on prices, and that's, that's not out of the ballpark, surprisingly enough. I thought that that was way high, and I got to digging around and checking, and it's...
Where we live in these days.
Yeah.
Everything costs more.
But we didn't put it out for bid because it's under co-op, is that correct?
Correct, sir. So before we got started, we checked with Glenn. He recommended we, we contact Nucor, because we do have a Sourcewell contract, I guess, through them. Because I, when we first started this whole discussion, I wanted to see if we needed to go out for bids. And Glenn had recommended we go through them because they have the contract.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief. Steve Diggers wanted to speak on this topic.
Thank you, Jeff, for answering some of my questions. I appreciate that. Good morning. Jeff answered some of my questions, so did, to Kevin. My question is, obviously, one of them was the bid situation, and you guys covered that. It was good. Did you compare prices before just a carport versus a covered facility? Because it seems like a lot of money that, that, you know, car dealers all through this county just build awnings to cover their thousands and thousands of dollars worth of vehicles. Can we not do that?
I actually can't answer that question.
Okay.
So we started having this discussion about a year ago, when we got the command vehicle, and I'd gone out and got a couple of different bids, looking at options on how I could present this. The lowest bid I got back then was 100,000. I had some of them that were closer to 200,000. And that, that was just asking people for bids. And that was three local companies here.
On a, on a carport style or an enclosure style?
Just a covered.
Just a covered parking thing? So, okay. And the other question is, geographically, where's this going to be? Where are you going to put this?
It would be behind the EOC.
Okay. All right. And the size, do you have, you have a footprint size? Just kind of curious?
Uh...
Because I couldn't find any information on, on what it's going to look like. So it's more like a shed style then, with a loafing shed with the garage here?
Three, three.
Okay.
It'll all outdoors on one apartment.
Good. That's all I needed. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay. Nanette Samuelson.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I've heard some concerns about spending $100,000 to build the storage facility for the Mobile Command Vehicle. First, is this the right time to spend $100,000 on a structure to house the 17-year-old vehicle along with now, I understand there's other vehicles? You have heard the concerns from the community discussing the funding for law enforcement. You've probably also seen a lot, there was articles in the paper, there's been social media chatter, there's lots of discussion about law enforcement and the money that needs to be allocated there. There is a difference between needs, wants, and nice to have. The proposed $100,000 Nucor storage facility is in the category of nice to have. If there was a need to protect the command unit from hail damage or sun, there's other structures that can be built to do the same thing. This is what I've heard from people in my precinct as well. There are less expensive options. This, this is the first meeting of the new fiscal year. The structure was not discussed in any of the hearing, budget hearings or meetings that we just had in June, July, August. Also, going back to timing, as you are aware, we are in recession, and it's getting deeper by the day. The housing market is seeing a decline. The cost of capital is going up. As, as both of those things happen, as the housing market declines, cost of capital goes up, construction decline will follow, which means that materials and labor to do that will become more available and the cost likely will go down. So is this the time? Or is it more prudent to wait a few months, see what happens with the cost of capital, the cost of building supplies, and then make a decision? So in summary, the things that I've heard from people that have contacted me, plus my own personal feelings, there are higher priority, priority issues pressing on the county. Knowing there are less expensive options, knowing the community is voicing concerns about safety and law enforcement, it is irresponsible to spend $100,000 at this time on something that's a nice to have. As you just heard from Ms. Kidd, there are other uses of this Fund 101 that will go towards some of those safety concerns that the county is voicing. So those are my comments, and thank you.
Okay, next, Mr. Robert Means.
Good morning, Your Honor, and members of the court, and members of the public. I just wanted to comment, first of all, that I absolutely support the Sheriff's Office 100%. But in this particular time, I, I have a little bit of a reservation about the county spending this money at this time, because as we've heard, we have officers that need pay raises. That's pretty clear to me. We have an economy that is absolutely headed into recession. We've had now three, two full quarters of recession, and stock markets heading new lows every day. So I think what Ms. Samuelson says is something we should take very, very seriously, that the likelihood of our costs decreasing and our ability to be able to produce this facility at three or, or maybe six months down the road is a very, very strong possibility. So once again, I 100 support the, percent support the Sheriff's Office and what they're doing, but I'd very much like for y'all to seriously, seriously consider reallocating that money to possible raises or incentives and so forth for the officers that we currently are employing. So that's all I have to say, gentlemen. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay. That's it. If anything else you would like to add, Chief?
No, sir.
Okay.
When is the Bookmobile scheduled for delivery? I, I mean, I think there's some very legitimate points about, you know, the economy is, is definitely on a downward trend right now, and...
Ford still doesn't have the chassis for the Bookmobile yet.
Do it.
Ford still does not have the chassis for the Bookmobile. They're having trouble getting the 550 chassis built, because they've retooled all their lines to build electric vehicles.
Wow.
So we're, we're still kind of waiting on it to be built.
You know, I, but I'm not opposed to, to the building to protect our assets. I mean, we had talked also about, do we need to get with the city and make sure everything's good? I did speak with Mr. Head about that, and he said that he felt like this was something that we could, that we weren't going to run into any, any issues with zoning and permitting and whatever from the city. But, you know, maybe there is some wisdom. I'm not opposed to protecting the assets, to building the building, but maybe there is some wisdom in putting this off for a little bit and seeing if, if the prices change significantly in the next three months. I don't think, I don't think things are going to go up. I think they're kind of on a downward, downward trend, looking at all the forecasts and everything. And I'm, I think holding off on this a little bit, like I said, I'm not against it. I just think maybe we need to hold off on it a little bit.
What do you think stock market's going to do, too?
Looks like it's going down. I think we're, I think everything's going to be in a mess in no time, so...
What do you think the prices of materials are going to do?
It's actually, still has been coming down a little bit. It, it hit a peak, and it's, it's on a little bit of a down, so...
I'm not too sure about that. Well, do I hear an appropriate motion?
Can I comment, Judge?
Yes.
I just want to put into the mix that I have to, I tend to agree with Ms. Samuelson. Is this something that we need to do now, especially when citizens come up here and we're getting emails regarding salaries for the Sheriff's Department? And is this the best way to spend this kind of money right this minute? And I have to question the wisdom of that, considering we just got through with the budget cycle. And you know, when, when we, the Bookmobile issue, let's start with the Bookmobile. When that issue came up, nobody told us we were going to need it. Now we're going to need a garage for it, and we're going to need to, you know, we weren't told that. When the Mobile Command Unit was, unit was purchased, we weren't told we're going to need a garage for it and spend more money to house it. You know, vehicles are made to be outside. During the budget cycle, nobody told us about this. And we just finished with the budget cycle. Today is the first Commissioners' Court of the new budget, and we got requests for money on a bill that we should have talked about before. The last part of it, which gives me a little bit of heartburn, is that I didn't, these documents that I've got, and I haven't had a chance to review, because I just got them, there's, there's a contract involved, and there's some other issues that I just hadn't had a chance to look at, frankly. And perhaps we need a, maybe we ought to do a workshop on this and, and let our citizens talk about what they want, because I'm hearing, right now, the theme that I'm hearing is that the Sheriff's Department needs more money for their deputies, and maybe we need to back up off of this right now and reconsider. So I, I don't see any reason in the world that we can't consider putting this off and, you know, we've made, we somehow made it this long. We've managed to survive without this for this long, and you heard right there, they don't even have a chassis yet for the Bookmobile. So who knows how, you know, it may be another year before we get that. So I don't, I don't hear any exigent circumstance where we need to initiate spending money that we didn't put into our budget that we just finished doing. So I, I would have to tend to say, let's, let's put this off.
One thing I would like to add, this is the same document that I emailed all of you a week and a half ago.
Last week.
The only difference is there was a revision to add the Sourcewell contract number on the front page.
Yeah, I looked at it, but you didn't, I, never mind. Just, that's fine.
Any other comments, questions? Do I hear a motion?
As I move that we approve and authorize the county judge to accept the quote from Nucor Building Systems to build a storage facility for the Mobile Command Vehicle and other mobile county assets. Cost of this project not to exceed 100,000, which includes construction by Nucor, the dirt work by County Road Ops, and electrical work by County Facility Maintenance, from Emergency Management 101 account.
Second. Motion is made by Commissioner Wilson to authorize the county judge to approve the quote from Nucor and from the dirt work by County Operations and electrical work by County. All this to be paid not to exceed $100,000 from Emergency Management 101 account, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
May.
May.
Motion has it. Motion has it three to two.
Thank you, John.
To approve the work. Thank you, Ms. Chief Young. Okay, item number three, discuss and take appropriate action to join Operation Green Light for veterans by lighting the historic courthouse green from November 7th to November 13th. We have our Veterans Representative Sergeant Linda Mellon, who does a great job. Yes, sir, Sergeant.
Thank you very much. It is an honor to be here. So just to give you a little background on Operation Green Light. Operation Green Light began as a collaboration between the New York State Association of Counties and other organizations, the Veteran Service Officers Association and the Expiration Term of Service, the ETS sponsor programs for individuals that were coming off active duty and were, you know, reintegrating themselves back into the community. The mission was to show support for veterans in military conflicts with special emphasis on veterans of Iraq and Afghanistan, as well as raise awareness about challenges that faced by many veterans and the resources that are available at the county level and state and the federal level. Because a lot of the troops, when they come off active duty, they really don't know what's out there. So as a result of the New York State's efforts, in May 2022, the 2022-2023 New York State budget was approved for $10 million for human services, veterans' community service organizations, and all kinds of money for mental health services and things like this, which fortunately, we have TVC grants, Texas Veterans Commission grants. So, you know, we get that through them, and we really appreciate that. But in acknowledgement of the success in New York, the National Association of Counties made a move to get behind Operation Green Light nationally with the National Association of Counties' mission to strengthen America's counties, serving nearly 40,000 county-elected officials and 3.6 million county employees nationwide for Operation Green Light. And Phase Two national effort is underway, which is what we're going to talk about now. So Operation Green Light seeks to empower and connect counties with soon-to-be veterans and their families through a coordinated and cohesive transition process. Operation Green Light improves relocation outcomes, reduces stress to veterans and their families, and helps them prepare to move into their selected county when they come off of active duty. So the coming Veterans Day, the National Association of Counties and the National Association of County Veteran Service Officers are inviting the nation's 3,069 counties, parishes, and boroughs to join Operation Green Light for Veterans Day by lighting municipal buildings green from November 7th to November 13th. By shining a green light, the county governments and residents will let veterans know that they are seen, appreciated, and supported. So I ask that we light the county courthouse green for Operation Green Light from November 7th to 13th, and remind our veterans that I am in the Rockin courthouse in the center of town if they need me. And so I ask your approval.
I understand that you talked to Mr. Jay Riley, and you and he have worked out how he's going to be able to do the green lighting, right?
Yes. They're very clever over there.
That's all right? Won't be a problem?
No.
So, all right. I hear a motion that we light up the courthouse green.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say it.
A motion made by Commissioner Andrews to light up the courthouse green for our members from November 7th to November 13th. The, or pink, such as Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion?
Well, I want to thank the court for all of your support for our troops. Thank you very much.
You do a good job supporting all the--
I appreciate that.
And you did your basic training at Fort Campbell, Kentucky, where, I know, Lister went before you, right?
No, way before.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Linda. Okay? All right. Item number four, discuss and consider for approval permission to collect a soil sample from the site of the Veterans Memorial Statute on the courthouse lawn. As y'all all know, Brett Quinlan is the one that kind of headed up this deal. He called me, he's working double time since they had a holiday yesterday. And the construction engineer has said that they're going to have to have a soil sample where the statue's going to be, because it's going to be so heavy. And they want permission to come up there and take a soil sample, which won't cost us anything, and to make sure that it's going to be strong enough to support the weight of this statue. So I think this is, you know, kind of a given here. But anybody have any questions or comments about this? By the way, they raised enough money through the Ruck at the Riley deal to more than cover this. I think it's between $70,000 and $80,000 that they have raised to do this. And this is going to be remembering all of the citizens of Hood County who gave their lives in defense of World War I, II, Korean, Vietnam, and the war in Afghanistan, or the war on terror. So I think this is a very worthwhile project, and it's going to be right there. And we already gave permission for this statue to be placed on the courthouse lawn. So do I hear appropriate motion for permission to collect a soil sample?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Eagle for permission to collect a soil sample from the site of the Veterans Memorial Statue on the courthouse lawn, seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that Jay Riley needs to keep gophers out of there, make sure they don't make tunnels under it, too.
All right, you've got another deal. Watch the gophers. And don't be like Bill Murray in Caddyshack either. We'd like a different approach to getting rid of the gophers, okay? All right, with that, all those in favor of permission to give the soil sample, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right, next, public hearing to discuss, consider, and take appropriate action to, A, request road closed to through traffic for an approximate 90-foot section of Silverton Drive between Main Street and White Horse Drive, and B, place signage creating a pedestrian crossing on Clearwater Place between Main Street and White Horse Drive for a proposed park in Main Place. Yes, sir, Mr. Donald Lenny.
Judge, Commissioners, this request, along with Commissioner Wilson, this is a request from the HOA of Main Place. If you'll remember that back some time ago, that the Development District Number One had bought some parcels in Main Place to create a park. And in this, they have contacted Commissioner Wilson in wanting to close this section of roadway, which would be right here. This area here is 90 foot, and the park consists of this right through here. This is Silverton, and this is Clearwater Place. So in order to close any section of roadway, which the Commissioners Court of Hood County governs, whatever we do to a roadway, it does come through Commissioners Court.
During our discussions, there are still, everybody can be able to get in and out, emergency vehicles be able to get in and out. We're just closing this 90 foot, and that allows the park to proceed forward with their development.
You recommending this? It doesn't impede traffic in any way, in your opinion?
Oh, on Silverton, it will impede traffic if it's closed, yes.
Okay, well, but it will not impede emergency vehicles? Are the homeowners getting to the houses?
They're going to have to detour.
They're going to have to detour?
Yes, yes.
They got, okay.
They typically go, you know, to the other, what would become detours, just to get in and out of the development anyway. Because that, you know, either way, they're going to have to go pretty much the same route they've been going.
Yes, like this one right here is Main Street. This is North Gate. This right here is Arrow Creek. It goes also to North Gate. And of course, Clearwater Place goes to Fall Creek Highway.
You know, we went out and inspected, and I don't know how much traffic, but just while we were out there in the 10 or 15 minutes, there was cars going up and down that street. So I just don't, I don't know. They won't be anymore if you block it off. But, you know, I get, there are regulations, I think Clint gave me a copy of, about dead-end streets. This won't be against any of our regulations about making a dead-end street without a cul-de-sac turnaround? You have to back out. If you got in there, you have to back back out.
Yeah, of course, if approved.
There is some utility accesses to the back of those homes that you do have to get down that dead-end that would be a dead-end to get to there.
Owen, could you go to that next area, please? Yeah, we're talking about the back of these homes here. Depending on what the court decides, we're looking at maybe putting, if the court wants to put, sink some bollards in here. Of course, we'd have to put signage up here, right here at Main Street and back here at White Horse, showing that this was closed to through traffic. So, I mean, there's a lot of things that the court decide whether we do bollards or there's some other way of blocking this off. But the way I understand from Commissioner Wilson, this is just to give free access through this park area for children, people.
The lower one will be basically the designated parking area.
Yes.
Right up there. Will be the, where the parking, you know, for the vehicular vehicle.
Yes, and that's the section that, the second part of this, about placing signage to be a pedestrian crossing in that 90-foot section. To be honest, Judge, I've never done this before. We never closed one in the center. And not against it or for it, I just, I don't, I've talked to Matt Mills, and he's looked at it. So, and that's why it's on the agenda.
Mr. Mills, do you see any problem doing this?
Judge, I didn't see a legal problem. Originally, when they came to us, and Mr. Wilson can verify, they wanted to block both roads, which would have caused a real disaster traffic-wise, in my opinion, and cut off part of the subdivision. It would have been real bad news. The one on your left in the picture, that main thoroughfare that heads to Fall Creek Highway, that was originally proposed, and so we scaled that back and said, no, we got to leave that one open. And that'll still be fine, because that really doesn't divide the park itself, just the parking lot from the park. So I didn't really see, I mean, everybody still has their way out to Fall Creek and to North Gate, and I didn't see anything legally that would bar us either. So once we scaled it back, I thought it would be a decent idea, but--
Okay.
So it was recommended by the homeowners association, isn't that correct? And they do represent the people that live in that subdivision? So, you know, hopefully, they would have talked to the homeowners association people about doing it, and then--
Yes, sir.
Haven't heard any complaints about not doing it.
The only person assigned to speak on this was Nanette Samuelson. On five?
Oh, sorry, I meant six.
You meant six? Okay, well, then there's no one to speak on this, so-- Anybody want to make a motion?
Yes, I move that we issue a road closed through, for through traffic for the approximate 90-foot section of Silverton Drive between Main Street and White Horse Drive, and place signage creating a pedestrian crossing on Clearwater Place between Main Street and White Horse Drive for the proposed park in Main Place.
I hear a second. Second? Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to take appropriate action to have the road closed for the 90-foot section of Silverton Drive between Main Street and White Horse Drive, and place appropriate signage creating a pedestrian crossing on Clearwater Place between Main Street and White Horse Drive, seconded by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion?
Yes, Judge. Could we speak to how we're going to close this section? Are we going to use bollards? We're going to sink bollards into the pavement? The part on--
Bollards into it?
I think we have to, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Right. Include that in the motion?
And in signage at each intersection, on each side going in?
Yes, and the court should know I don't have any kind of signage of this sort. So as soon as the court's over with and it's approved, I will order the signage.
So no access, is what you're going to say, a road close?
Close, yeah, through traffic.
Okay.
On the bollards, we have other things that we have. According to the TMETCD, some signage that we'll have to put on those bollards.
All right, good, appropriate signage then. Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Mr. Lenny. Okay, item number six, public hearing to discuss and take appropriate action regarding the designation of approximately 4,078.22 acres of land in southeast Hood County as a reinvestment zone under Texas Tax Code 312.401 for the Yellow Viking Two Solar Farm Project. Okay, let me see. We've got a bunch of people wanting to speak on this. So the first one is Joanna Freeville, is that correct?
That's correct. Judge, are you going to go into public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a good point. This needs open to public hearing.
And the last--
I'm sorry. All right, so at 10:10 PM, we're going to convene into a public hearing at this time. Okay, please, the floor is here. Pull the mic down so that, there you go, so you can speak right into it.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for your consideration on this agenda item number six. And I ask you, please, to consider tabling this reinvestment zone until there is better understanding of all the unintended consequences that come along with this decision. I have a handout that I will give you, and I'd like it to be part of the official record of this meeting. America is under assault from foreign entities wanting to consume our subsidies and our tax dollars. And they're using green energy to strip hard-working Americans of their tax money when it could be put to better use for many other projects of value. Seven out of 10 of the top companies getting these subsidies, the 312s and the 313s, are foreign. The parent company of Yellow Viking Solar is European Energy, a Danish company, who will be building this site with $200 million of taxpayer money, yours and mine. They will not use their own money for this project. Then it will be sold, and all the profits will leave the area. In 10 years, it will be depreciated to nothing. So any taxable value will disappear by the time your abatement is finished, not a benefit for this area. It's not that I begrudge anyone making money, but a tax abatement just for them? How much have you given to your local businesses lately? And I hear your sheriff's department needs money, too. We all have been hit hard by COVID and this recession, and I hate to see something like this solar facility be rewarded when it will bring no economic development to the area and possibly only two full-time employees for the next 20 years. Glendale is the center of our best green energy production, with a nuclear power plant can match peak. It provides steady baseload power and just chugs along no matter what. The weather can be rain, wind, shine, hot or cold, and it keeps going. It provides us with 9% of Texas grid with reliable energy, so why would you want to build a facility that can never provide that, what the end user wants? They want cheap, reliable electricity when they turn on the switch. They don't care much about the rest of it. Unreliable solar will only compromise our grid further. It seems like such a huge step down from what you've already accomplished with your nuclear facility. Then there's the question of pollution. I was told that this land is sandy and not much good for anything, but it is surrounded by the Brazos River and neighborhoods, and a well-populated area. I'm sure you've been told there's no pollution. This is green. This is clean. Wrong. Not during generation, but the product itself is full of pollutants like cadmium, just name some. My colleague will talk more on that subject. Remember, 95% of these panels come from China and have no oversight for quality or contaminants. They probably won't last long either, as they say they will. What does when it comes from China? And then there's the question of disposal of broken panels. No landfills in Texas to take this hazardous waste. Yes, there will be broken panels during transportation and construction to begin with, so what will be done with those? Then there's the pollution of the Brazos River from stormwater runoff, silt, and more. And that could be a can of worms that you don't want to face. worms that you don't want to face. I ask you to consider this reinvestment zone, recognize problems, and table it until you've done more proactive research about the possible major pollution factor in your area. We can supply more information if you would like. Talk to your senator. We've discussed it with him. He's looking into the lack of regulations and possible problems associated with it. Please do more research. Both Ehrath County and Comanche Counties have turned on solar and battery storage for abatement. Other counties are looking hard at batteries and their potential hazards and are tabling these reinvestment zones. There have been questions raised of insurance rates, there have been questions of raised insurance rates around these facilities and lack of training for fire departments who are already severely stressed. Thank you for your consideration on this agenda item number six, and please consider tabling this. Thank you.
What, excuse me, ma'am. What's your name again?
Joanna Freibel, and I'm with the Texas Coalition for Environmentally Safe Solar.
Freibel?
How do you spell your last name?
F-R-I-E-B-E-L-E, and it's on the handout.
Thank you.
Along with my contact number.
Where do you live?
I'm in Ehrath County.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Ed Dominguez.
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Ed Dominguez, and I am a member also of the Texas Coalition for Environmentally Safe Solar. Appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. My intent this morning is not to sway you for either a yea vote or a nay vote on this issue. It is your decision. I want to provide you information on how delicate, whichever side of the vote you go on, how delicate, and some of the things that need to be considered before you make your decision. Very sensitive, very critical decisions that will affect your county on either side of your vote. It doesn't matter. It, it, there's some sensitive, critical decisions that need to be considered. I'm going to touch on about three of them, and there's dozens of them. The first is environmental concerns. I don't know if you're aware of it, but the Brazos River watershed is, is home to endangered species under the Texas Park and Wildlife Code. And in the very next few months, the United States Fish and Wildlife Service is going to list also some species that are, that are of concern, will be listed as endangered or threatened. And those come with several other issues, but I guess what I'm saying is, consider your options. Consider how you can limit your liability. The first thing I believe that, that would limit your liability, if you approve this resolution, make the solar companies require them to have environmental compliance versus, number one, contact the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and contact the Texas Park and Wildlife, and get them, get those two agencies to, to do an environmental compliance or an environmental assessment of what their facilities are going to do. That limits the liability of everybody involved considerably. Secondly, I want to talk about health and human safety issues. In that handout that we gave you, there's a page there of 12 toxins that are contained in solar panels. Every one of those toxins are carcinogenic. They cause cancer to people. This comes from the EPA and has also been verified by the American Medical Association. The next page there is, there's a photo of a destroyed solar farm. That's what happens to these solar facilities when you have hurricanes, high winds, hail, tornadoes. And what that does is, those panels right there in that state, when they get rained on, they start leaching those toxins. And those toxins, because of the proximity of the Brazos River, that's where they go. So, those, that is a really significant program. I just, I'm just asking you to give yourselves time to figure out how you want to address those issues. And the last thing I want to talk about is the future economic impact of your city, your town, your county. When those environmental issues come to head, and they will, because they're happening right now all over the United States, where those toxins get into the groundwater, into the surface waters, we see it almost every day on TV in North Carolina, Camp Lejeune. There's a town out in California that became a ghost town because those toxins got into the groundwater, killed people. 25% of the people in that zip code are still considered disabled. Just give yourselves options. Give yourselves time to figure this out. And the other thing that I want to do, our coalition has about 3,000 members, and we're trying to protect all of the state's water resources and all of the state's aquifers. We've got two years' research on this. Anything that we come across that isn't properly vetted, documented, verified, it goes in the wastebasket. What you hear from me today is 100% fact-driven. Those items, those materials are available to you to help you make your decisions at no cost to you. If you later decide that you want to form a working group, and you decide you want our people to be part of that, to bring ideas and help hash out, that is available to the county at no interest. Second, the last thing I want to say is, if you choose to address this issue with a yea vote, that's perfectly fine. You have the authority and the jurisdiction to do that. But you also have the authority and the jurisdiction to place ordinances to make sure that they're in compliance to address every one of these issues. And I didn't talk about herbicides. I didn't talk about runoff. I didn't talk about silt. There's a zillion issues out there. If, I guess, pardon me for the way I'm going to put this, but if you, if you decide to go with that, and again, that's your decision, that's fine. If you're going to dance with them, that's fine, but give yourselves the authority that you pick the music that you're going to dance to. Don't let them tell you, oh, it's going to be fine, zero negative impact. Water usage minimal to washer panels. You have the authority to slow the process down until you answer those questions, and I, I behoove you to please take, take the time to answer those questions. And I just touched on a very brief issues that are associated. Yes or no? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next speaker, Steve Biggers.
Before I start, they attached the map of the property with the agenda. Hang on a second. If you'd pause my time. I'd like to see if the map can be gotten up there on what's going to be affected by this piece of property. It was on the agenda. It's very telling. Can that be found?
It's not in the agenda that I have.
It's not? You don't have a copy of that map?
It's not in the agenda that I have available for.
I, I hope, I hope everybody's looked at this thing, and just asking you to put your brakes on it for just a second. This is located in the loop of the Brazos.
Uh, excuse me. I won't take your time, but take a look at the hyperlink. It's on the hyperlink. You ought to be able to pull that up. It's the last page of the hyperlink of that agenda is the map where the solar farm's going. You should be able to pull it up off the hyperlink.
Prospectively going, Commissioner.
Pardon?
Prospectively going.
Well, that's what the map shows, what they're asking for. This is a reinvestment zone. It hasn't anything to do with the abatement yet, but this is a reinvestment zone. Can you find it, Owen?
Give us a title, sir.
Because I've got it up. I pulled it up. Exhibit A, under item six. Last page of the attachment.
I can go ahead while they're finding that. I appreciate it. I, I really think it's telling when you look at it. So, 50 years ago, 60 years ago, nuclear energy was the big thing. Everybody, it's good, clean energy. And what did we find out? We've got nuclear waste we have to deal with now, shipping that off to non-populated states. It was a very bad thing. Now, we have wind, winds, green energy with windmill, and they're finding out about these large generators that they're having to deal with, and these blades that have gone bad with storms that have come through and have to bury them, and they don't decompose. This is still a relatively new technology, folks. We understand it, but with what I've just heard about chemicals that are involved with that, and the footprint of where this thing's going to be, it is really, really treacherous to put something there. You've got 7,000 people living in Pecan, Commissioner. You are responsible for that right across the river. And, and the runoff that's going to come off these panels and clearing this ground, that was the map, yeah. The runoff that's going to come off that and affect the river and that whole system out there, it's ecologically going to be a nightmare. And then, all of a sudden, we have a Texas tornado come through and destroy that? Folks, this is not a good plan. 4,000 acres, and, and I'm confused here because you're spending money, you're wanting to build a $100,000 this, $100,000 that. I got that. I understand that. If there's a need, maybe hold off, but you're wanting to give money away for something that's not going to be very effective in the environment if something happens. This is a very treacherous area to put that in. If you guys see, that's Pecan on the other side of the river, and that's, that's a lot of people that live there. So, I, where I live, I live pretty close to Abe's Landing, and they're doing a new Section Two of Abe's Landing. My property is within the footage of the, the distance. I got a letter saying, we are doing this, and we are going to develop this. Do you have any input with that? We haven't done that with these folks. I know there's, we decided this last time to have a public meeting. I understand it was probably put in the newspaper. Not a whole lot of people read that 6,000-person circulation and look for those things. These people that are going to be affected by this should be approached. There's million-dollar homes on the other side of that river. They're going to look out and see this shiny panel shining back at them. That's not a cool thing. That's not, Commissioner. That is not a good place to do that. And then you're wanting to give money away with it, with the abatement side. I understand what you're trying to do right now, but it's going to cascade that way. So, please, put the brakes on this. Let it have a public forum. Let people that live in that area be involved and have input before you let some European company come in and just start working that land up. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Robert Means.
Your Honor and members of the court, you've heard the other considerations that have been brought up here. I'm, I'm going to address a couple of things that are actually issues that the state of Texas is facing. And Senator Jim Hall is actually working on this with his grid reliability program. And one of the things that has, has come to be a huge problem for our energy grid and so forth at the moment is total capacity and 24-hour reliability in all-weather conditions and so forth. Now, we know from our great Texas freeze here a while back that these green energy sources and so forth are totally unreliable during times of night, obviously, and during times of bad weather and so forth. These panels, like they're talking about, they have to be washed quite frequently. This is something that the, the maintenance staff would be taking, you know, this would be going on each month. And 10% of the, the capacity of a solar panel can easily be lost just due to a very light film of dirt and so forth, very minor, minor issues. So, this is, one of the other issues that is, Senator Hall has brought up with, before the legislature, is that we are subsidizing these productions of this power. And so, what happens is, is during the daytime, when a hot Texas day and the sun's shining great, those things put out fantastic amounts of power, and they help power everyone's air conditioners and so forth. By the very same token, there has to be what's called spinning reserve. So, the electric utilities out there have to have standby generators running at any given time, that if something goes down with those solar or wind power, they can immediately pick up the load. And that means that the frequency is our biggest issue with the grid. We have to be able to hold the power right at 60 cycles. We're very, very close to it. So, what's happening right now is, we are subsidizing unreliable sources of energy, and we're penalizing our most reliable sources of energy. And so, I would urge that we run some, some more careful analysis of this particular proposal before we do it, because I've been following Senator Hall and his work on this, and he wants to strengthen the grid, make it less resistant, more resistant, pardon me, to electromagnetic pulse information or problems like this. I think we, we should certainly defer to Senator Hall's task force that has been working on issues related to this very, very issue. So, I would urge you to at least table the motion for the time being and consult Senator Hall and his staff about this. I think you'll be quite impressed with the level of work and the, his technical competency to be able to speak on this issue. So, once again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Nanette Samuelson.
Good morning again. Just to add on to what Mr. Murn said, Senator Hall has been working on this for quite a while. He actually produced a movie called Grid Down, Power Up, that I would encourage anyone to go. You can find it on the web. It's a really, really good movie, Grid Down, Power Up. So, over the past few days, I have heard from many citizens in Precinct Two and across the county. I would bet Commissioner Cotton's probably heard from folks, too. As this solar farm will be across, if you wouldn't, wouldn't mind putting the map back up, that'd be great. As this solar farm will be across the river from a large section of Pecan, if you look at the top, go straight down from where it says Exhibit A, down to that little white kind of curve there, that is Pecan Plantation. And that white curve down there is Sandy Beach. And then, from there up to the top would be our left-hand corner, that is all along Bell Chase, Bonterra, Edgewood, mainly Bell Chase, but the actual club, the Pecan Plantation Country Club, is right up there in the corner as well. So, I've heard from a lot of people in Pecan Plantation about this, and the range of, the range of concerns from impact of runoff and flooding due to the trees and landscape being removed, as this, as other people said, this is right along the river, environmental impacts from leaching of hazardous material into the groundwater of the Brazos River, and the Brazos River, the impact to tax values, property values as houses along the river will now see a solar farm in their backyard. The long-term impact as the solar panels age and are damaged by, you know, wind, hail. We have tornadoes and hailstorms quite frequently in our neighborhood. So, there are several other concerns, but those were the main ones. Today, you are voting on whether or not to designate this as a reinvestment, these 4,000 acres as a reinvestment zone, which creates tax rebates, or, sorry, tax abatements. Reading from your order, it states, this will contribute to the retention or expansion of primary employment, and will attract major investment in the zone that will benefit the zone and will contribute to the economic development of the county. I'm not seeing where this will bring a lot of jobs in or attract major investment. So, as other people have stated, there's a lot of questions that the community has, a lot of things that are unknown, some environmental concerns. I would agree that maybe it's time to put this on hold and do a workshop, do some more research, and get some more answers before creating a reinvestment zone out there. Thank you.
Okay. All right, that's all the speakers. Anybody have any additional questions or comments?
Do we have Scott Deathridge?
Yeah.
Yeah. Even though he didn't fill one, this is, this is, this is a public hearing. I think you got to listen to it.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners.
He's not prepared to even know what our rules are, so.
And I apologize. I didn't realize I had to sign up. So, my name is Scott Deathridge. I'm an attorney. I represent Yellow Viking Development. I've been practicing the area of environmental law and energy for 35 years. I've worked. the area of environmental law and energy for 35 years. Um, I've worked in all areas of air pollution, water pollution, groundwater pollution, soil pollution. And one of the things I, I want to clarify is the, the statement, first of all, that there will be runoff. The only risk of runoff is really during the construction phase in solar farms, oil fields, uh, natural gas-fired power plants. And I, I've worked in all these spaces, oil and gas, natural gas-fired power plants, refineries, chemical plants. And during construction, whether it's a housing development or a solar farm, you have to obtain what's known as a federal, um, stormwater pollution prevention permit. And that program has been delegated to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, and all solar projects, including this one, will have to obtain that permit. You also have to put in a stormwater management plan to ensure that none of the soil that's being, um, disturbed during construction flows into a river or stream. And so we, like all other construction projects, will ensure that we have, um, fences and, and other means of controlling stormwater runoff during construction. Now, once construction is complete, there will be grass grown, and so there's, it, it's really not any different than the fields we have today. And so there's no real risk of a runoff issue. Now, the second issue that was brought up, which I want to disagree with wholeheartedly, is any of the metals or other chemicals used in producing solar panels are bound up in a glass. And so they're not going to leach out. It's, it's, I, I live in a house built in 1934, and my, my bathroom is full of lead. And why wasn't I concerned when my kids were growing up? Because it's bound up in the glaze that is fired, and that lead can't get out. It's the same principle with solar panels. The metals in that solar panel do not leach out in normal operations when they're out in the solar, uh, farm. And so that, that is just not going to happen. And I think if you would study the science and the engineering, you'd find that that's true. Now, one of the statements also is made that somehow the county is, is giving us money. Well, the reality is, we are not asking for a nickel for any roads, water, sewer, as you would if you were building, like in Johnson County, when we were talking to them, they had a big, um, Louis Vuitton factory built. And so what did they want? They would, wanted money from the county for roads, sewer, and water. We need none of that. We, we do not impact, from a cost perspective, um, the budget, which you just talked about. We will not reduce the budget of this county one penny. And we will invest $169 million in this county. That is a tremendous amount of money in almost any county in the state of Texas, but I think it's a major investment in this county as well. And so we are bringing, just by building this project, almost $170 million to the county. Now, with respect to jobs, here's how it works. Most of the jobs are, are, occur when you do the construction. So the goal is to try to start construction in the first quarter of 2024 and hopefully complete the project by the first quarter of 2025. This is a very large solar project. It will probably take somewhere between 400 and 600 people during that year program to build the project. So that's 400 to 600 well-paying jobs, construction workers, steel workers, electricians, and various other people we will need, and we'll draw as much as we can from this county. And so someone's gonna have a really good paying job. And someone mentioned the economy's going down. Well, wouldn't it be nice in this and other counties to have someone who can employ people for about a year, about 500 or 600 people for a year during that downturn? Um, and so we believe with, with our other project that's already been approved, we're, we're bringing 200 or 300 million dollars' worth of investment into the county. There is no environmental impact. There was some concern about, well, what happens if there's a tornado or there's some sort of destruction to the panels, where the state law requires that after 10 years, we have to post a bond that provides for the removal and disposal and restoration of the land once we cease operation. And in fact, it requires that in our leases, the leases require that we, um, remove the solar farm. And typically, you remove everything down to about three feet, and then you restore the land as it was prior to the solar farm, um, being there. Now, I don't, I understand there are people with concerns, but I think the facts have to guide this organization and this, this body. And we are willing and able to provide any facts you need, any science you need about solar projects, runoff, environmental issues at any time you need it. I know I provided some of that information to Commissioner Cotton, and we're happy to provide that. But I, I'm concerned that people are getting up here and telling you things that simply are not factually true. And, um, it would be a shame to give up on a 169 million-dollar investment in this county based on things that simply are not true. And I'm, I'm happy to answer any question.
Yeah, I, I got a couple. Tell, tell me your name again.
My name is Scott Deathridge. I'm an attorney, and I represent Yellow Viking Development.
Okay, and where, where's your office?
Dallas, Texas.
So there's a couple of issues that I've got with what you've said. One of them, um, you talked about, you disagree with some of the people that have spoken about it being bound up in glass, uh, right? The, the chemicals and the potential, but if glass breaks, then it's not bound up anymore, is it?
Well, these, these panels can, can withstand hail unless it gets up to a soft block.
Do they ever break?
Um, under extreme stress, they will break.
Okay. Um, so that was one question that I've got. And, uh, the other one, another one is, you talked about the Federal Stormwater, uh, Act being delegated down to the TCEQ.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, I will just put this on the record, that the TCEQ leaves a lot to be desired in, in doing anything about any type of enforcement or, uh, following up with property owners in a local setting. So I just wanna get that on the record. And another point that you made about 10 years that you're gonna decommission or whatever potentially, and because there's laws about that, we don't even know you're gonna be here in 10 years. So that's another issue that I think, that to me, between both sides of this issue, what I'm hearing is that we need to put, we need to discuss this more. We need to, we need to bring in, we need to bring your folks in, and we need to bring the other folks who have spoke in, and we need to sit down at the big table together and talk about this before we make a decision today. I realize it's just designating a re, a reinvestment zone today is what's on the agenda. However, that's the nose, the camel nose under the tent. And so I'm having some issues. I know that we did this a couple of years ago, and, uh, it seemed like a good thing to do at the time. And my, this is just speaking from my viewpoint. However, I'm, I'm looking into this further, and I'm starting to have some reservations. And I would like to, I, I would like us to have an open discussion with the taxpayers and the homeowners and the, the people who live in this area, uh, to get some more feedback and impact where more people are on board with the same idea than fighting, than disagreement. I would like to bring that disagreement level down a little bit. And I think what I'm hearing today is we've got a high level of it. And so, um, you know, you talk about investing 169 million in this county. You're putting 169 million in your company. So, you know, I appreciate that idea, but that's your company that you're putting that money into. So I respectfully just wanna call this out, because I think, I think we need to have a conversation about this. And I think we, uh, you know, we should sit down at the table and bring all those, the interested parties in, and let's hash this out. I think, I just think this, that we're being, um, asked to do something right now, that we've gone from a 500-acre deal almost two years ago, which I agree, I voted for it. I, I admit that. And, uh, but now we're talking about upping it to 4,000 acres, and I haven't even seen anything done with the 500 acres yet. So, uh, between that, and then I know that, um, Bell County's against, has come out against these, E wrath County has come out against these, Comanche County has come out against these. Uh, and I'm not saying that at the end of the day, we're gonna be against it here, but I don't think today is the right time to make that decision, even with a reinvestment zone. So that's, that's just my, that's just me. One guy up here. And I'm only 20% of the court.
I would like to, you know, Clint, I would like Clint to address some of the issues from the development perspective.
I know you are just considering the reinvestment zone and possibly an abatement later, but everybody's talking about stopping it. I just want all the citizens to be aware, that's regulated by the state and higher authorities. As far as development's concerned, they're not subdividing, they're not creating infrastructure. We have no zoning in the county. We have no building codes. So unless we implement zoning for the whole county, you can't just implement zoning for the whole, that part. Unless we put on a zoning department and a building code department, they have no approval through the county unless they get in the flood plain. They would not come through the court except for the reinvestment zone and the abatement.
So here's my response to that. We've, that's, I agree with Mr. Head 100%. The, the counties, if these, if your company goes out there and, and does this without our participation, this is a free country, and that's a, they're free property owners. You're entitled to go do that, and we can't, we can't regulate you out of it or anything else. That's just the point. You're being, we're being asked to participate. And that's what I have a question, that's where my questions come up, is yes, Mr. Clint is correct. We don't, we don't regulate, and we don't, we don't, as a county entity, we don't do any of that. But we're being asked to participate.
Mm-hmm.
And being asked to participate, I think that we, I'm hearing a lot of information here, but I just think we need to tap the brakes and, and get you back up here. Well, you're not, you don't have that far to go from Dallas. And, and let's look at your information, let's look at their information, and then we can make an open eye decision, at least I can. Right now, it's hard for me to make any kind of decision today on that regard.
Are you, uh, doing any of these solar farms in Texas anywhere else?
Um, the company is looking for other sites in Texas, yes. And they're, they're working in about, they're looking at about five other states. And they've done these projects in 17 countries around the world.
Anyplace else in Hood County that you're doing one? My question is, uh, so where I'm leading is, you know, we got into a issue, four of us got on the court, about a nuclear plant. And we were totally against it. And we shut it down. And we said, "Ain't put no nuclear plant in our county." Well, guess what they did? They put it 100 yards from us in the next county and took all the tax money, and we didn't get it. I just gotta be concerned, if we don't do it and they do it, we don't get the adblocking tax. Don't get me wrong, I'm not in favor of this thing. I'm not, I brought it up as a public hearing, but I think you need to consider those things. If you, if we don't allow a reinvestment zone or some kind of abatement, we probably won't get the solar farm.
No, the solar farm won't be built.
Okay.
And, and Somerville County has already approved their reinvestment zone. There's plenty of room in Somerville County.
So if you don't build it on our side of the river, you could go build it on the Somerville side of it.
Very, very easily.
So, uh, we just, I, look, I'm not selling. I'm not a salesman. I just wanna make sure everybody hears what we might be getting into if we don't.
And, and I recognize that the investment's not being given to the county, but the investment in the county creates the property taxes that you'll get. Without an abatement, you don't get the property taxes you'd otherwise get.
What's the depreciation lifetime, what's the depreciation schedule on solar panels?
Um, in the state of Texas, it's 10 years down to 20%, and then it's 20% forever.
Man, this is, this is a, this is a very complex issue. It's a complicated thing. I understand our decision today is very simple, whether to create the reinvestment zone or not. But I think there are a lot of, a lot of factors in here that, uh, I mean, I was in a conference last week. I haven't had much chance to sit down and dig into this. And I think a lot of very relevant, uh, issues have been brought forth today. I would like more time to stop and look at this.
I'd like to point something else out. I had a, I had a, a person come in from a, not even in my precinct, and, uh, come to my office a few days ago and lay out a lot of information to me that I had not thought about. And, uh, and I'm seriously looking into it. And, uh, I'm pretty much of a research kinda guy. And once I get through my research, and then if I'm, whichever conclusion I come up with is a conclusion I can stand on and say, this, I've looked at this information, and this is my conclusion, and I can feel good about voting yes or no. And, uh, but, and this person is generally kinda, doesn't like me that much. But she came into my office, cause I was happy to have her come up. And I don't say she doesn't like me personally. She doesn't like my political issues sometimes. But this was one where she knew that I was interested in this issue, this type of issue. And again, what I would like to see us do, I'm hearing a lot of, uh, to me, um, not, people not quite ready to make a decision. So I'm gonna make a motion that we table this till further, for further discussion, and that we, uh, have a, have a couple of workshops first. Motion to table it.
Second.
Can we, do we have to come out of public hearing first?
Oh, all right, sorry. That motion's coming.
Sorry, sir. You have to fill out a public participation form.
Can I, can I just?
Okay.
Can I just make one other point?
Okay. Make one other point. You're right.
And then I'll, I'll sit down. We, we are also working with the school district, the Glen Rose ISD. If we don't get this, um, reinvestment zone today, we probably won't be able to go forward with their tax value limitation. The, the school districts that get these, these value limitations, that they get, especially, uh, Glen Rose ISD, because they have the nuclear plant, when they get these, they get to keep more money, um, at home as opposed to sending it to Austin. And so the school district has already voted to approve the solar farm in both Hood and, and Somerville County. So if we can't, we need this reinvestment zone to go forward with that. So, so they, the school district will effectively lose their tax benefit.
Okay.
But.
Okay, yeah. I'm sorry, sir. We're still in a public hearing. You can speak. Come on up.
Can I come up there?
Yes.
My name is Ron Roberts. I live at, uh, 9610 Divitt Drive. I didn't come down here planning to talk about anything, just to see what was going on. Uh, has there been any public hearings for at least Pecan Plantation about this? Now, I don't have the experience this gentleman does. I haven't worked in refineries or the oil business or in the oil field, gas. I, I was in the car business, owned a car dealership. But I, I just well know, cause I honestly have never even heard about this, being built right across the river from where I live. Have there been any public hearings out in, at least in Pecan Plantation?
No, this is the first public hearing we've had on this issue.
And you're gonna, you're gonna vote on it without?
Well, we're just, we're following the local government code 312 is what we're doing.
Okay, but my question is, can you not have public hearings before you have this?
Yeah.
I mean, I lived in a town where we had public hearings all the time on money the county was spending.
Ron, 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 I'm, I'm not the salesman for this.
I understand.
I'm not. So am I, I'm not, well, if I had a public hearing in Pecan Plantation, what would I do? Am I gonna sell it, or am I gonna be against it?
You don't have to be either one. You can just tell about it.
Well, that's what, that's what we're here today doing.
Well, we got 7,000 people live out there. The, I guarantee you, most of them don't even know what's going on. And we're gonna be the one most affected in this county. You know, just like when there's a sewer deal gonna go, you've got an area there that's gonna be affected. So you, we need, our area needs to know about this. Uh, and, uh, I've never heard of spending a hundred thousand dollars without multiple bids. That was a different deal. Thank you.
Can I say something in there?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. You're next, sir.
Okay. I just wanna say something on the 313 with Glen Rose School. It's not tied to an abatement that you would do. There have been solar farms that have been turned on, on 312s, uh, Brownwood, uh, Brooksmith, for, for instance. They got the school abatement, they built the deal. They didn't get the county abatement. There have been quite a few of those. They get the school abatement. That's their main goal. They go after that 313. That's when they get their investors. They've done it without the 312. That way, the county gets all the tax money coming to you. You don't get, give them a tax abatement and get less. So that's disinformation. Um, I forgot my other deal. Senior moment. I had another thing I was gonna say, but that was the main thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I think most of you have seen me before. My name is David Ferris. Uh, first, real quick, I wanna say, really need to have it so that you can sign up during, so you can speak. I want to say, really need to have it so that you can sign up during, so you can speak. Because when I saw this, I didn't have enough information that I really wanted to speak. It is a public hearing, so that's one of the reasons I wanted to come up here. All right. First comment I wanted to make was to you about one thing you had said of concerns about the damage to a solar panel, disposal of it, you cannot dispose it. And you mentioned, you know, construction. That didn't bother me. That didn't bother me at all, really, because that's a minor. The first point I was going to make on that is, gee, I think there are still hailstorms, major hailstorms that come across Texas. Baseball-sized hail, I've seen what it does. I had a rent house. All of them would be gone. You're talking about total replacement, which is loss of the grid power for months and months, plus the disposal of those. The lawyer here was talking about, well, the carcinogenic metals, those kind of things. I wasn't concerned about those in runoff situations for that kind of an issue. Because again, they are solid metals, right? However, glass does break. And I don't believe those metals are encased in plastic, as you would do for abatement for asbestos, something in that, that nature where it's totally encapsulated. Once the glass breaks, I think the metals would be exposed and there could be some potential for erosion of those metals somewhat minor. But I wanted to also consider, I believe they still have tornadoes in Texas. And if a tornado runs through there, you're going to be pulverizing everything. And then you're talking about particulates that are going to be spread across potentially most, much of the county, inhaled, et cetera. Those are considerations. My experience as a junior in physics, I got to go to the Comanche Peak Nuclear Power Plant. I stood in the bottom of reactor number two before it was crated in. I stood in the control room, looking at all of the control equipment for running reactor number one. It's massive. It's designed to be 24 by 7. It's immensely protected from any, and that's the reason. It's, it can stand, it's designed to stand up to hurricanes, tornadoes, hail, whatever. Because you've got eight-foot-thick concrete walls. I walked through it 100 feet up onto the outside scaffolding. It's designed to go 24 by 7. These panels are not. There's one other thing that I will not say is an absolute expert, but I've read that solar panels, they are really electronics. What happens if your computer overheats? Doesn't work well. Odd things can happen. My understanding is the optimal, optimal temperature of solar panel conversion is about 85 degrees. In Texas, when we need air conditioners, if I recall, it's about a loss of 3 to 5% for every 5 degrees above that. When it's 117 out, you're going down on an electricity conversion. That's my understanding of it. But I only have a undergraduate degree in physics. That's not where my expertise in work was. So, I definitely would ask for this to be tabled. And I really want to be aware of when it's coming back up, so I can actually be a little bit more prepared. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I don't want to turn this into a debate, but I do think it's important that you hear two more pieces of evidence. What the gentleman said about releasing toxins from a solar panel, what, what he said was correct, but he didn't give you the whole story. I can put a solar panel right there and I can look at it for the rest of my life. And I'm not going to die from those toxins, because they're not going to be released. But at the moment, that those solar panels become compromised by those storm events, they start releasing them. And they start releasing them in a big way. If you'll think, these solar panels are put together much like an OSB plyboard. They're wafered. Once, once they're compromised and they're subjected to high temperatures, freezing weather, landfill pollution, there's been studies done around the world. Delamination occurs and they start releasing them. And they start releasing them, these toxins, in a five-month period, 70% of the toxins were released. So, you know, he was partially right, but he didn't give you the whole story. And secondly, as far as TCEQ, again, partially right. TCEQ is going to make them get a construction permit. And that permit is you will avoid stormwater flooding. But the minute that facility is built, TCEQ washes his hands of it. And they don't, they don't regulate anything anymore. One inch of rain over one acre generates slightly over 27,000 gallons of water. I'm going to give you the example that I know of right now. One inch of rain over 2,400 acres produces 60 million gallons of water, a one-inch rain. There will be flooding issues, there will be runoff. Three, four-inch rain, now we're talking about 180 millions of water coming off of there. TCEQ is not going to control that. Their sole purpose is during construction. And Senator Birdwell has been made aware of this. And we've met with him and with his staff. And they're looking into see how it can be corrected legislatively. But he admitted to us, it may be a while. And you do have authority to put some of these things in place via the Texas Constitution and ordinances. You have authority for health and human safety. Thank you.
Just a comment. I wonder what's happening with these people who are putting these solar panels on the roof. Ron and Nanette, how many out there in Pecan Plantation? I see them going up on top of roofs out there. What's going to happen to those people when they put these solar panels on their house? Are they, are they going to get killed?
I don't know, but this gentleman from Dallas, he's witnessed some of this hail.
You're gonna have to come up, sir.
Come to the mic. I was, so I was just asking a question. There, these solar panels are going up everywhere. We can't stop them going on top of houses, but I guess we can, we can not turn down.
Mr. Wood, come on.
One more for, can I ask?
Sure.
Mr. Deschardes, tell if, what is it, if, if we were to delay this, if you don't mind, and think about it, have workshops, what would it do to, to the project? How long can we delay? You're not going to start the project until 2024.
Well, you know, I, I, I think for people, don't you do large privately financed projects? It seems like that's okay. But we have to go through a financial approval process with both investors and lenders. And so, we also have to get approval from Encore and the grid operator. All this has to be timed. And if we don't get that timing right, it, it pushes things off. And in fact, our, our first project, Encore put us off a year, so we had to back off a full year because Encore decided they wanted to delay the connection to the grid. And so, all these things are, have to be timed very carefully. Supply chain is an issue. We've got the supply chain lined up. If we, if we, that gets off schedule, then it pushes, it could push things back.
So what is your schedule requirement for us to make a decision?
We really need this all to be worked out between the counties and the school district by the end of the year.
Okay. I was just asking.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
Good afternoon. My name is Grant Wood. I live in Place 4. I just want to speak to my own personal experience with solar energy. Installed some solar panels at my house about two years ago. And specifically, and just want to speak specifically to performance. Been through two summers, very hot, exposed the, you know, to the elements, direct sunlight. I'm sure it was very, very hot up there. I did not see any degradation of performance. And they've been very stable. Haven't had any issues with them in any of the stormy weather that we've had recently. Thank goodness. The second piece is about cleaning them and performance when they're dirty. I didn't clean them for about a year and a half. Thought about that. Got somebody up there to clean them off. And I didn't see a significant change in the performance of collection. Less than 5% difference even when they were dirty. So, but we did get them cleaned. And it was recommended to clean them on a yearly or by, you know, every two years. So, just from my experience, it's been a, a good one. And haven't seen any particular degradation of performance over the last two years that I've had them at my house. I've also done a combination with batteries. So, it collects during the day, takes care of all the energy needs of the house pretty much all day when the sun is up, as well as storing into the batteries. And then it discharges into the evening. And so, over the last two years, it's taken care of approximately 40% of the total energy needs of my house. Just want to let you know. Thanks.
Thank you. A couple of things that came to light, Joe, if you don't mind, since the discussion started. Two, first, Mr. Cotton, you sound like a salesman. You really do. You're sounding like you're trying to sell it. No, I'm telling you I'm not.
And I don't appreciate the veiled threat on the school board tax stuff, sir. You, you don't live here in our county? We're, we're, I understand what you're saying about the school board voting off on a school, school board doesn't vote here.
This is a public hearing. You're not attacking any of the witnesses.
I'm not attacking him. I'm pointing out his observations, sir.
You are attacking him.
Yellow Viking Development 2, registered in the state of Texas, March 22, 2022. They haven't been on our state six months. They're job shopping counties to set this stuff in, folks. He says they don't have one in a county anywhere here in Texas yet. They are job shopping and jumping around with no proven performance. We can't, we can't open this door. We just can't. Thanks.
Can I respond? Go ahead.
Yes. So, again, if, if you're in business, all of these solar farms, in, in most operations like that, and I work with oil companies and other companies, there, you have a, you have a company and you set up a special purpose entity like an LLC for all of these projects. That's just how it's done. It has nothing to do with job shopping. We're not trying to shop between counties. We're very interested in doing this in Hood County. It's a great location. There's lots of transmission lines. And that's, that's why we're here. And we'd love to do this in this county. And I assure you, this company has had, has had experience dealing with all the concerns that have been raised. They've done this in 17 countries. And for, for my worth, I would rather have a large company backing a project like this rather than a small company. And, and they, they are interested in Texas because Texas has a lot of sun, has, has good tax base. And ERCOT, despite all the bad things that may have happened over the last several years, ERCOT is one of the, you know, one of the best places to do business in the, in the United States, if not the world. ERCOT is known around the world. They're also known for the winter problems, but they're also known as a, as a, is a very good deregulated market. And that's why my client's here. And so, we'd, we'd love to do business here. I, I don't want to take up any more time. I know others want to speak. If you have any other questions of us, I would have had representatives from the company here if I'd have known that I needed them, but, but I didn't. But just would love to see this go forward and would appreciate you at least approving the investment zone. As we're looking at the tax abatement agreement, we can also talk about these other issues. So I'd greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to make you feel at ease, Commissioner Cotton. The solar panels on top of homes are completely different than the solar panels in a utility scale.
We'll ask Mr. Deschardes to agree or disagree with that.
I disagree with that.
Okay.
They're just, they are completely different. They don't have the toxins in them that the utility scale do. And I just wanted to put your mind at ease on that. Also, on approving this part of it by the end of the year is not necessary. The 313 has to be approved by the end of the year. That's why he's putting the pressure on. Thank you.
That is correct. Yes, ma'am.
Who, which one?
Thank you very much. I, I'm not an engineer. I'm not in physics or anything like that. But more and more information has come out about solar panels in a negative way, that it's very expensive, it's high maintenance, it's destroying our environment. And I urge you to please do your extensive research, to, to look into all of these things at the expense of the maintenance of it all, and what it's doing to our environment, what it's doing to our land. We took the bait of going with the windmills for the state of Texas. Look what happened. Yes, it took a couple, a couple of years or so, I don't know how many years, to find out as to what really happened. But they found out, it's, it's now turned into a piece of junk. So what are they going to do with all the windmills? It's killing our birds. It's killing our environment. It's extremely noisy. Please, please be very careful to do your research. Please don't jump into this. Because it's, it's extremely, I know it, there is a carrot dangling there, oh yeah, $100 million, et cetera. But where's it going to take us? Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir.
My name's Steve Britt, and I didn't expect to come up and speak on anything other than what I spoke on earlier, but I have strong feelings about this. The area that this is going to be in, I spent a lot of time as a child down in that area. It's called the Abbey Bend. And it's on the other side of the river and is very inaccessible from Hood County. There's very little access to it from Hood County. That tells me one thing, that most of the jobs that are going to be created are not going to be created for people in Hood County. They're going to be created more for people in Somerville County. So they're going to be getting the benefit of it whenever they're actually doing the construction. Whenever they do the construction, it's going to take a certain amount of time. Once they get rid of that, the maintenance of those facilities is not going to be very great. There's not going to be a lot of people doing it. One thing that I'm also concerned about is the energy that is created from there, there's no guarantee that that's going to even come anywhere near Hood County. It goes onto the grid system and it can go to anywhere in this country, or anywhere where ERCOT is, I guess, I guess they sell it to them. I don't know. But there's no guarantees that any of this money or the electricity that's produced from it is going to go to Hood County. We got people that are worried about making money, but the money is not going to be coming to Hood County. And after 10 years, 20 years, and everything gets to where it's useless again, because it, it does go away with time, they're either going to have to reproduce it and destroy the old stuff, or they're going to have to leave it there and then whoever's, whoever's there stuck with it. That is a very beautiful area down there, and I'd hate to see it destroyed by solar panels that could presumably affect our children 20, 30 years down the road. And we shouldn't make our children suffer from decisions that we made for the almighty dollar. Thank you.
My biggest concern in this, Ron Roberts, and my biggest concern is that the people that are being most affected, that you represent, Ron, that we overall do not want to know what's going on. And we should be involved in this decision. Those people that live right across from that solar farm should be advised. This decision cannot be made because you're afraid it's going somewhere else. This gentleman's here because they think we're the ones that they can sell this to. He's not in any other county. He's here. So I would not let that worry you about losing this to somebody else. If we lose it, so be it. Things always work out for the best in my experience in life. But I just hope that y'all consult the people that are going to be most affected by this, which is Pecan Plantation. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to, Pastor McMahon?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
There is something my folks built, bought and built in Pecan in 1974. They were one of the first people out there. And they lived back on Belchase, up 80 feet up above the river. During that time, they passed in 96. During that time, I can't tell you how many times the, what the river flooded. But I've seen water over the gutters of the homes down low in Pecan. And the thought that kept coming across my mind after seeing that picture is if this, if the river floods, and trust me, the Brazos River is not, it's prone to flood, what will that do if it comes down around there? what will that do if it comes down around there like that, crosses over and puts ten or twelve feet of water over this project? What's gonna happen to the three hundred miles of river between there and, and the Gulf? So it's not just us that we need to consider, but it's the potential danger that, that exists in this thing. And my only question is, or my, my, my recommendation, I guess, is that please take some time to consider these things prayerfully before you do anything. Because we keep talking about all of this stuff, and we're keeping God out of the equation here. We cannot control Mother Nature. We cannot control what happens. And, but having a flood of that nature come through there could only be bad. And it would be bad not only for us here, but also thousands of people down river. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay.
Mike, you gotta hear from Mike.
You know, I wasn't gonna do this, but I, it, in, in the, the mode of doing your homework, and I'm not hard over on one side of this or the other, but in, in the mode of doing your homework, this kind of reminds me, you know, I grew up in this area. It kind of reminds me when we did the nuclear power plant. It's just, the, the naysayers are just going crazy about all the things that can happen. I will tell you, there's a community in Florida that is totally solar-powered with hundreds of homes, and they withstood Hurricane Ian, hundred-and-fifty knot winds, thirty inches of rain. And, and if you don't believe that, you need to look at, what is it? I don't know, Sunday Night, what, the Sunday Night TV thing.
Sixty Minutes.
Brain-dead. Pardon?
Sixty Minutes.
Sixty Minutes covered it Sunday night that not one solar panel was damaged in Hurricane Ian, and that entire community was up and running with full power the next morning. Okay? So, you know, I'm just saying, if you want to do your homework, let's do both sides of it. Let's not light our hair on fire and go crazy about all the things that could possibly happen. So, again, I'll just pass it on to you for what it's worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
All right. I got one more thing now that Mr. Scott's brought up his little point. That when the nuclear plant was put in, nuclear power was a proven energy source. It was a proven energy, it was a proven reliable energy source. Sol, solar power is not-
There was no danger? I was there. You weren't.
Well, you, you might, anyway. It doesn't, that, that's not the point. The point is, is that solar, uh, nuclear energy was a proven power source, absolutely proven. Solar panel, to, efficient power source. Solar panels are not proven yet. It's just like Mr. Wood said. He gets forty percent on a good day of energy, forty percent of his household needs, but it doesn't run his house with it. Solar panels are not gonna run your house. Now, I think that, all I'm saying is that there's enough, I don't think this is a comparable to nuclear, the nuclear plant, which I agree, they turned it down and they put it on the property, the county line right across the county. So, you know, it, that didn't work out so well, did it? I agree with that. But we're talking about thousands of acres on this deal in an area that's, that's, I'm just listening to what people say. That's all I've been doing today. It's, I've learned, I've learned a lot of stuff just today out down there. And maybe we just tap the brakes, is all I'm saying.
Okay. All right, it's eleven-nineteen, and we're gonna close the public hearing and convene back into Commissioner's Court, and I will entertain a motion.
Yes, I move that we table this discussion, have at least one, probably two workshops to further address this for all parties involved.
Second. Motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to table the action regarding the four thousand seventy-eight-point-two-two acres of land in southeast Hood County as a reinvestment zone for at least two workshops. Second by Commissioner Eagle. All those, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, we, well, we're gonna put a timeframe on that or just leave it open? I miss asking.
I think we need to put a time limit on it. That's, do y'all wanna do it within the next thirty days? Or is that with the election coming on?
How about three months? We got plenty-
Two months?
Three months.
I like three, don't you?
Three months sounds good.
Okay.
I agree.
Three months. All right.
Well, I'm off the court.
To be done within three months. Okay. All right, with that amendment, you got that, Katie? Okay.
Give it to Nanette.
Okay, so, all those in favor of tabling the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five to nothing to table the motion. Okay, the next item, consider and take appropriate action to authorize a county judge to sign a twenty-twenty-three Hood County resolution for the indigent defense formula grant program. This has been a complete, this is what we do every year, isn't it, Matt Mills? This indigent fund that, that the district judge proposes for the indigent fund?
Yes, sir.
It is? Standard deal. Have you looked at it?
I, not this year's version, but, I mean, nobody sent it to me, so.
Okay. All right. Based upon the assumption that it is the same one I have looked at it, and so that we can get out of here. Do I hear appropriate motion for me to sign a twenty-twenty-three resolution?
I might get motion.
Second. Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Egan, second by Commissioner Wilson, allowing the county judge to sign the resolution for the indigent defense formula grant program. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five-zero. Item number eight, accept the addendum to the LESO program State Plan of Operation, SPO, for Constable Precinct Four and allow the county judge to sign. The Honorable Chad Jordan.
Judge Commissioners, last week, an email was sent out from Austin, from DPS, on, actually, it started on the second, and then there was some clarification, or the thirtieth, and then there's been clarification. Under the milit, or not military, but the state program, that the ten-thirty-three surplus in property that we have access to for law enforcement agencies that we participate in, President Biden has changed that, and in that, some of those, just to give you a, an overview that all vehicles are now controllable. What that means is that if you obtain any vehicles from this, whether they are like what the sheriff has, an MRAP, an armored vehicle, sometimes there's pickup, sometimes there's cars, sometimes there's vans, there's other types of things. They are all controllable, which means the county will never own them. At any time, you don't participate in the program, you have to send them back. It reiterates the sharing of controlled LESO property with other agencies. If something is controlled, you cannot share it with another agency. I couldn't give it to the sheriff. He couldn't give it to me. We can't give it to the fire marshal. We couldn't give it to the PD. Riot gear, batons, fixed over-two-foot shields, helmets, breaching apparatuses are now controllable when they used to not be. What that means is, over time, you're gonna have to turn it back in. Believe that the ones we have now, sets that we've obtained over the years are not, so we, the county, will own those. Specific guidance for allowable uses of controlled vehicles. All law enforcement agencies are required to train their personnel on the usage of controlled property. If you have a vehicle or something, and they're not trained properly, the feds can come back. If there's a report of any of that, there's an accident or an incident, they will come pick that stuff up. Additional guidance for controlled property that is used in significant incident. They're just putting more guidelines on it, and they're also stating that we have to now, every year, allow or allow to, for the agencies, notify the public and notify every time that we redo our contract or sign the agreement that we also notify the public. And we're gonna do so through our website to make that notification. And every agency has to make this notification and agree to the addendum and allow the county judge to sign. Otherwise, they cannot participate, and if it's not done by the end of the year, they have to turn in all items they've ever had that are controlled and turn those in, and it's over with. So we're just asking that the county judge sign the addendum, that we agree to it, we'll make the notification to the public, and continue on.
I got a question on it.
Yes, sir.
So how much time do you estimate that you had to, in the past, not what you, in the future, but how much administrative time do you have to spend dealing with the administrative record-keeping that this requires?
This, in the beginning, was quite a bit until we got it set up, and we've been working also, creating a spreadsheet of all the things passed and things that we have for Glenn to have also. And it was quite a bit of time and some time-consuming, because some of those things that they would send us were not all complete. And now, it's probably, now it's prob, sorry about that. I'm loud, so I didn't think I would need it. So now, our, our time on this is probably about an hour a month going through. And then every year, we have to certify everything that we have or have had, and go through that inventory sheet, those things that are still listed, and that takes about two hours to go through all those.
So now, so less than twenty hours a year?
Absolutely.
And you don't anticipate that going up much with all these, with some of these new provisions?
No, I think this is a simple fix. The provisions they put in for us, that, that'll be simple and take care of digitally, through media, social media, on the website, make it easy.
Okay. But any other questions? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion to accept the addendum to the LESO program State Plan of Operation, SPO, for Constable Precinct Four, and have you, the county judge, Ron Massagill, sign the addendum.
Second. Okay. Motion been made by Commissioner Eagle, second by Commissioner Wilson, to accept the addendum to the LESO program, and allow me to sign that document. All those, any other questions or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five-zero.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jordan. All right. Item number nine, consider and take appropriate action to allow the repair of the mailroom vehicle from Fund Fifty-Five not to exceed thirty-three-hundred dollars. Yes, sir. Mr. Glenn Tillman.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. So the, the twenty-thirteen Ford Escape that we currently use for a mail vehicle is in need of repairs, to the rack and pinion and the seatbelt mechanism, which of course are both safety concerns. So I'd like to request up to thirty-three-hundred dollars from Fund Fifty-Five to make these repairs.
Okay. And Becky Kidd has addressed that and said that there was money in Fund Fifty-Five. So do I hear an appropriate motion?
Yes, I move that we approve, you know, the action to allow the repair of the mailroom vehicle from Fund Fifty-Five not to exceed thirty-three-hundred dollars.
Your second?
Second.
Aye. Okay. Second and a third here. So, motion been made by Commissioner Wilson to allow the repair of the mailroom vehicle from Fund Fifty-Five not to exceed thirty-three-hundred dollars, second by Commissioner Eagle and Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries five-zero. Thank you. Item number ten, consider and take appropriate action to approve and authorize the county judge to sign a proposal for option one, programming for a new law enforcement center, county jail, not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars, or option two, program for a law enforcement center addition slash renovation not to exceed a hundred-and-four thousand dollars, to be paid from, and Becky Kidd has addressed the court and said that she would rather have that paid from Fund One-O-One. Do you all right with that, Mr. Tillman?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that's what we have here. Go ahead and explain that to us. I don't know, you got, Mr. Ryan here.
Yes, so, so in the last court, we received a facility condition assessment of the law enforcement center. So this court, we're looking at the next step, which is called programming. And I'll let Ryan Roseborough of AGCM explain what this is and some of the options that the county has.
Okay. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Ryan Roseborough with AGCM Project Management. Appreciate y'all having me here this morning. So to, to bring you up to speed a little bit, as Glenn stated, we previously brought a facility condition assessment on the existing jail facility, which showed somewhere in the order of about twenty-six million dollars' worth of, of repairs needed that we would consider immediate or near-immediate replacement items. So with that, looking ahead a little bit, we brought you, we were asked to put together programming proposal for what would be basically phase one of design on a new facility. So what programming is, programming is, as I said, basically the first step in the design process, where you determine how many square feet you need to accommodate whatever you're trying to, whatever your goal is. Once you've determined what that square footage is, then you put pencil to paper and see what that number is cost-wise, and now you know how much money you need. That way, you are designing, instead of designing to a budget, you know, just saying, well, we got twenty million dollars, let's design something to fit twenty million dollars, you may be left with something that's not functional. You may be left with something that doesn't fit the bill for what you need. You're just getting what you can afford. So programming is kind of working in the right order of figuring out first, what do you need? What are the needs of the county? And then budgeting up to those needs so that you're working in the proper direction. So, the process of programming, we are not architects. We are a project management firm. So when we were asked to bring back programming proposals, what we did was reach out to several trusted architectural firms within the state of Texas that have a lot of jail experience. Those three firms were DRG, Burns, and HDR. I'm sure the sheriff probably knows at least a couple of those firms. They have probably more jail experience than any other firms in the state of Texas. This is not, you know, a Starbucks or, or apartment complex. This is pretty specialized work. You know, jail facilities, literally, life and death is on the line if you don't build these things the right way and program them correctly. So we wanted to reach out to somebody who's an expert in the industry. So we got statements of qualifications from each of those three firms, reviewed them in depth, qualified the highest firm, which was DRG out of San Antonio, and then had them bring us a proposal for programming services, which we then did the dance on, the negotiation back and forth, and landed with where we are today. So the proposal you have in front of you, we presented two options. We had DRG present two options to us for programming. Option one is moving forward with, as we talked about again in the last go-around, option one is basically a brand-new facility, a four-hundred-bed facility. Okay? And it's actually cheaper to do programming on a brand-new facility than it is to do programming on a renovated facility, because you're having to work around what you have, the confines of what's already there. So option one, you see before you is a new four-hundred-bed facility, not to exceed eighty-five thousand dollars. Option two would be programming for a two-hundred-bed addition, and then also programming on the existing space to renovate it in the future to accommodate two-hundred beds. That would be the, the goal, anyway. So option one, four-hundred beds, brand-new facility. Option two, two-hundred-bed addition, two-hundred-bed renovation. Obviously, the renovation has its own challenges, which, again, is why that proposal for option B, option two, is a little bit more expensive.
Okay, question. Isn't that what we got last time? The twenty-five million was to do all the repairs on the existing jail, get that all up and going, so?
So, so what you got last time was only to improve the, the condition of the existing building, not to reprogram it or redesign it. So you're not gutting it and redesigning the whole interior of the building. You're basically just improving what you have. So that twenty-five million and some change was, you know, repairing the exterior of the building, repairing the slab issues, replacing the plumbing issues, you know, repainting, new flooring, new ceilings in all the spaces, all that sort of thing.
Landscaping.
Yeah, new landscaping, whatever, whatever was in there. You know, there was a bunch of stuff in there. I don't think we had landscaping, but we did have some, yeah, we did have-
I thought there was landscaping in it, but anyway.
I think we're a little more conservative, but, 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 so programming is actually the act of, of, again, remember, this building is old, right? It was built a long time ago. So the needs of the county were different then than what they are now. The way that you operate and the staff that you have now is different than what you had then. So the function of the building has probably changed in the past twenty-some-odd years. Just the way that the guards run their shifts and everything has probably changed. So programming is actually looking at that from a high level, visiting with staff, visiting with the folks that are there, the guards, and figuring out what do you need to make this building work for you, not just be stuck with what you have. So.
Okay, and, and I think that one thing, all right, my understanding is one of the things that they do now is they build more in a circular configuration where one guard can sit in the middle and keep an eye on several cells at one time. Is this kind of the stuff that you're talking about here?
This is the kind of thing, yeah, and, and every county sheriff could obviously talk to that better than I could, how, how they want to run their ship here. Every county's different. Every county operates a little different, so there's not a one-size-fits-all. So the job of the programmer, who is an architect, is to come in and sit down with the end-users and say, okay, you tell us what you need. We're not gonna just give you a box, a cookie cutter. You have to tell us what you need, and then we design the building to be functional to how you operate and what your needs are. to how you operate and what your needs are. So it's almost like, you know, if you built a house for a family of six versus a family of two, they're, it's, it's a house, they're both houses, but the functions of them are completely different. One has kids, one doesn't, you know? You have to adjust to that functionality of the space. Maybe a dumb, dumb example, but...
No, 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 I mean, no, no, I completely get what you're saying, but, and this is not... Is this architectural plans also with this?
It's not, it's not plans. What it is, so programming is basically the first step that comes before plans. So programming, again, is visiting with the end-users of the space to determine what the needs are. It's a series of meetings that happen back and forth between the architects and the end-users to help get your arms around what they need, to make sure you launch off in the right direction. If you ask me, it's the most important step in the whole process because if the programming...
Is it a virtual, a virtual program where you can actually see this after the sheriff meets with y'all? Will it create a 3D type of program?
No, sir. Not programming.
What are we going to get for this? What if, what is the Commissioners Court going to get with this program?
So programming, yeah, I could send you, if you'd like, a, a sample of what a programming report looks like, but it's a 100-page document, basically broken out by square footages all the way through the document. It's a whole bunch of Excel spreadsheets where they break out the spatial requirements of each space. So this many square feet for, you know, the record-keeping, this many square feet for the admin, this many square feet for this person. And then they go through what's called adjacency diagrams. The adjacency diagrams tell you what needs to go where within the building and how it should be. It's not drawings, it's not plans, but it's spatial diagrams telling you what needs to be where and how many square feet each component of the building needs to be. So look at this like, look at this like, like a puzzle. You're starting out with really big pieces of the puzzle. And the big pieces get put together first. And, and so then, as we drill down, we get into the actual plans, the level of finishes. At this point, we also come up with things like building standards. So if the county has certain standards or the maintenance department has certain standards where we want, you know, rooftop units only on the mechanical, okay, we can put that in the program because that affects how your space is laid out. That actually affects the functionality of the building. Or you want, you know, plumbing chases like they have now. That's part of the building program. How do you want those chases laid out? Where do they need to be in the building? So all this is laid out in order to give you, again, approximate square footages, adjacency diagrams, building standards, which allow you to put a price now to what you, you actually have something now you can price.
You have all three architects with, at certain times or different times?
Just DRG.
DRG is the one you've picked?
DRG is the one that, that, yeah, we felt most qualified.
Okay, all right, I got you.
Yes, sir. So, so DRG, this is not for the design of the building. DRG would do the programming only. So this is another thing...
So what happens when, if we decide to do something and we would go back out with an RFE among the other architects, but he'd have the plans that we want to do? Now the three of you bid or whoever...
No, sir. So you would own the program. Once, the, the deliverable is the program document. It's a booklet that they give you and say, here's the program. If you decide you want to move forward with design, you know, so the next steps would be, put an estimate to it, which we also have included in our, in our proposal, is to put numbers to it. So that's part of your deliverable also. Similar to how you saw an estimate on the facility condition assessment, you would get a similar estimate for the programming of the building.
Based on what the architect says we need after we tell them what we need?
Correct, absolutely. After he's done the adjacency, the programming, the spatial requirements, we have building standards, now we can put numbers to it. So what you'll get is the building program with an approximate cost. Then the next step after that would come the funding. You, you, as the county, would have to determine, is this feasible? How would we fund it? How would that line out? And if you decided you wanted to move forward, then you would go out, put out an RFQ for architectural services. The RFQ for architectural services would, you know, be obviously open to whoever wanted to participate. So it's not, it's not a given that DRG would get it by any means.
Okay.
Whoever architect you end up hiring, you, sorry, I did this last time. You get them off and running, basically by already having that legwork done for them. You've got the first step complete. If you hired an architect today for cradle-to-grave design on the building, the first thing they would do is programming. That's the first thing they would do. So we're just taking a little shortcut to do the programming first, get the estimate done to even find out if it's feasible for you to be able to build the space that you want to build.
What's the timeframe on the programming?
We think we can have it done before the first of the year. Very rapid.
I hate to always throw a wrench in the cog, but, I mean, surely there are examples of jails out there that are functional, that we can go talk to somebody, that we are reinventing the wheel here. Can't we just use somebody else's wheel, save us $85,000 and have a price? So, I mean, right now, you come back with a, that's going to cost you $200 million to build the jail you want, and we're like, yeah, no, we're, you know? We're out of that market, and we're out $85,000 at this point.
So I'll, I'll just give you one example of why we don't recommend that. We're working on a city hall right now, which I will not name the, the city, but they did exactly that. They rehomed a city hall, public, actually, it's a public safety facility, not a city hall. They call it a public safety facility because the police is there. This has been built in three other cities throughout the state of Texas. And they said, well, let, let's just do that. Let's just get that one. So they brought it in. We're now on about $1.2 million worth of change orders because as the project was being built, the end-users came into the building and said, you know, it was a good idea at the time, but we don't think we like this. Or we didn't recognize that. Or this doesn't fit the way we operate for our dispatch, or whatever it may be. And so now you're changing it on the fly versus catching all that stuff up front. So, so can it be done? Sure. But there's always going to be, in my experience, there's always going to be some tweaking because everybody's different, and everybody runs a different ship.
You know, I, I think we have a, maybe an understanding, we need 400-bed jail. Assume we do. But if we go with option A, the first one for $85,000, that's a brand-new jail, 400 beds. We don't know what we're going to get spending $104,000. Will we get 400 beds out of that? We don't know, will we?
Well, for the, for the option B, the programming would include basically reprogramming the existing space. So as you talked about a minute ago, if we basically gutted that existing space and we re, reprogrammed it based on what the county's needs are. It may get 150, it may get 200, it may get 250. We don't know. The addition would be whatever the delta of that is. 400 beds is the goal.
Okay.
So let's say we reprogram the existing space and it only came out to 150 beds.
But it might, we don't know whether it'd be cheaper, though, until we do the project, whether it would be cheaper to do 400 beds new or split between old and new. We will, we won't know that because we don't get to see both of them.
That's, that's correct, yes, sir. Yes, sir, yeah, it's, it's, it's almost a bit cost-prohibitive to go through the programming exercise on both. And then pick one that's, and you could, I mean, you could elect to just do both of them. But, you know, it's a lot of money to spend on, when you know one of them's going to get shelved.
It's a lot of money for a brand-new if, if you can save 50 cents on the dollar for refurbishing the old. And that's an if.
Well, yeah. What, what I would tell you is, if you look at the facility condition assessment we did on the building now...
Yeah. You can't do it for 50 cents on the dollar?
It, it's going to be a tough sell. Number one, just because it's messy. It's, right now, the market is so hot. I know y'all were talking earlier about construction prices and, and some materials going down. Eh, materials are stabilizing. Our estimators are telling us that prices are not going to go down. Our estimators are telling us buckle in because this is going to be like this. You know, prices don't go down, they stabilize.
Could we do it in stages? You build 200, and then we decide, really want to refurb or add on to that 200?
You would have to do it in stages because you have to house the existing inmates somewhere.
Yeah, well, you did the other one.
Yeah.
Current facility is 27 years old as of right now. Even by building the 200-bed, if we went with option two, you know, we end up building just 200 and then planning on refurbishing. You know, now we're, what, three and a half years down the road? Four? Somewhere in that neighborhood?
At least, yes, sir.
So now we've got a 31-plus-year-old facility that's already falling apart. It requires a full-time maintenance personnel just to keep it running now.
Right. And, and you also have that many more years of potential escalation on top of it. Is the escalation guaranteed? No, it's not guaranteed. The market may stabilize like we're thinking. But the problem we're having in Texas is labor. It's not materials, it's labor. And guess what? The worse this recession gets, the more people are coming here, right? Because we're the best off of every state in the country. So more people are going to come here, which is going to drive labor even higher because there's even more of a shortage because there's more building going on. So it's kind of, we don't see the prices going down. That's, that's my point.
And probably more inmates. Definitely. You know, if they keep building a virtual deal after they get to so many stages, you know, and you see a house being built, and your architect, and of course, a lot smaller deal, oh, I sure like to see a virtual plan, and you can kind of play with it a little bit, you know, where you can expand that. How much more would that cost? Have you seen that?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. That would come in what we call the conceptual phase of the, of the architectural documents. That would come with the actual architect itself.
That's the next step after?
That's the next step, yes, sir. So basically, what you're doing, if you look at it like a recipe, you're putting the recipe together, and then you're handing it off to the chef. Here's the recipe, go bake it. So that's what you're handing off to the architect. Here's the recipe, go build it, go design it. Now they have a launching off point. So as I talked about a minute ago, if y'all want to just bear with me here and run some numbers, I'll just give you some high-level numbers. So again, as I told you, an architect, their first step is going to be programming. That's, that's the first thing they're going to do. Unless you tell them, we just want a cookie cutter, copy Johnson County. And then you get Johnson County's, and then there's no programming. That's one way to short-circuit it. But if you say a $50 million facility, let's just say, for Grin's, a $50 million building, your architectural fee is probably going to be about 6% all-in. So that's $3 million, okay? About 5% of that is going to be programming. So 5% of $3 million is $150,000. So that's what you could expect if you were negotiating with the architect for the full package. So the good thing about this, I hope DRG's not watching right now. But the good thing about this is, you know, the carrot there is, hey, work with us. Let's get a program done. Work with us a little bit. They're not guaranteed the rest of the program. So it incentivizes them to sharpen the pencil a little bit. So again, $150,000 is what we had in our minds budgeted for programming, and we're, we're down below that for option A and, you know, a little bit more for option B. So we feel like it's a fair number. If you did launch into full design, you would still be paying that. It would just be further down the road.
That, y'all mind if I ask a dumb question? You, so you just recent, last Commissioners Court, you gave us this multi-page report about the existing situation with the jail. And you got in here a total project cost of $25.5 million. And that doesn't count the, if we tack on another 200-bed facility. And I guess, I'm just throwing this on the table. Where are we going to get the money? I mean, where's the, what's the plan on getting money for any of this? Anybody, are we going to do a bond issue or what's, what's the plan on that? Where are we going to get the money? I appreciate the recipe and giving it to the chef, but somebody's going to be paying a tab. And I'm just curious as to how we're going to, has anybody given thought on financing this? You know, how, how are we going to do?
I've asked, I've asked our honor to, to reach out to Mr. Sabonis, who is kind of our guy that deals with money, to ask him about a certificate of obligation. What's our limit on a certificate of obligation? Is there a limit to what we can borrow? Do we have to go to a bond and an election? So that's got to be determined, I agree.
Okay.
Which we have not done yet, but those are going to be our two options. We'll either be able to do a certificate of obligation for a certain amount of money, maybe in phases. This is, believe me, I'm not the expert on it. I put it on Becky, but she's working with Sabonis to try to get to us an answer of what our options are for the money, so...
So if I was doing this at my house, I'd have to figure that out before I decided which way I'm going to go, wouldn't I?
And you'd have to ask your wife, too, before you did it.
Yes, yes. I think that is, I think that's a critical piece of this puzzle is to find out if we can pay for this thing before we, before we spend money building, building a dream. So, but, sorry, Ryan. I like you, man. It seems like I always beat you up when you come here.
You hit the nail on the head. You have to figure out what you can afford. But before you can figure out what you can afford, you've got to figure out what you need, right? That, so that's, you're exactly right. That's why this is the first step. Otherwise, you just grab a number out of thin air.
Well, you've already given us a number. You gave us $25 million.
That's to repair the existing facility.
Well, so that's a pretty good start, isn't it?
If that's, if that's the will of the Commissioners, absolutely.
Because all we got to do, all we got to do with option number two you've given us is figure out the other 200 beds, which would be new construction, right?
But also programming of the existing facility. Remember, that facility condition assessment is only telling you the existing condition of the facility and what it's going to take to bring it up to where it was intended to be originally.
As of now, that's not as of four years down the road.
That's polishing it back up to what it was designed to be back in '96, basically. It, it doesn't change any of the programming of the space. In other words, you know, gutting and reorganizing and restructuring the building and all that. It's just bringing it up, basically deferred maintenance, for lack of a better term.
You know, and, and I, I can't imagine what the return on investment would be on tearing that building apart and redoing it. I mean, you know, it, you, I don't, I don't think that that's a feasible approach to this deal because if this building's going to last 30 years, we're not going to save the money in salary or whatever over that 30 years to pay for everything, to regut it and, and rebuild it in a, you know, in a way that, that saves a few jailers here and there's salary. So I think that that's something that would have to be figured into the equation, and that...
Oh, what if we spend that 25 million to refurbish the existing facility? What kind of longevity, how many more years is that going to buy us? Is it worth buying, you know, what kind of time we're going to buy?
So that's a great question. That's actually something I ran by my colleagues when they finished up the report because they all were looking at different components. So I wanted each one of them. How long do you think the building has left if we were to bring it back up? And I got answers that ranged from five to 15 years.
Five to what?
15. So part of, part of their concern was, if you look at that facility condition assessment, there's a lot of stuff that didn't grade out as a one or two, which is an immediate replacement or a life safety issue. There's a lot of stuff that was three or four, meaning it still has a few years left in it. Well, a few years, four, five, six years. So you're spending that 25, 26 million now to bring up what's failing or needs improvement, but in four, five years, you're spending more money to bring it, to bring that other stuff up that has now gotten four or five years older. There's also certain things that are going to be improved on that existing building that are going to be continuing maintenance issues. We talked a lot about humidity in that space. That was, to me, the biggest concern. Humidity coming through the exterior walls, humidity coming through the slab. So you can repair that, but it's going to be ongoing maintenance. In other words, at some point, you're stuck with what you have, and you're trying to make the best of it. Even if you, even if you improve what you have, you're, again, you're still bound by what you have, which is a slab and exterior walls, and you're still bound by that. So if that's still functional, that's great. But if it's no longer functional for you, then, you know, why spend the money and the effort to clean something up that's just not serving its purpose anymore?
You know, you, you asked about the ROI. What if we don't do anything? What's going to happen to this? We're going to have to ship all 200 inmates out of the county if we don't do something? And when that jail fails in five years and it's not unhappable?
No, I'm talking about redesigning the building that's currently there. I mean, that's, we would never pay for that difference in, in labor savings, so that's...
So we've got to do something. That's the issue.
I don't know.
And, and just to make clear so y'all understand my role, again, I was hired by the county to be an advisory and owner's representative for you. I'm an advisor. I'm not the general contractor, I'm not the architect. Whichever way the county wants to go, we'll fully support and we'll help however we can get you there. So we don't have, you know, but, but, but I could tell you what I would do if it were me and if it were my house. If it were me and it were my house, I'd build a new house. If it were me and it were my house, I'd build a new house. I wouldn't sink another penny into that. But that's, that's what I would do. Um, again, it's not my money and I completely respectfully understand that. It's not my money. But if it were, that building is rough. Our team has, looks at facilities all over the state and when they walked out of that one, they were, they were like, wow. We've seen some doozies, but it's, you know, it's just an old building and it's coming to the end.
The deal that you're sending smart guys to start construction on the new 400-bed facility and hope that that-
Facility that we have right now will last four more years? Cause that's what we're looking at, to get a 400-bed facility up and running, right?
Three years, probably. But if money were no object, that's what I would do. And even if you renovated what you have now, you still have to find something to do with the inmates. So you still, how do you even, I, I, I don't even, I can't even wrap my head around what you do with a bunch of inmates if you're renovating a space. How do you make something secure? Do you ship them all out, all over the state?
Well, Jay Riley's been doing, like everybody said, you just designate somebody for maintenance and that's all he pretty well does. And he's kept that jail running for the four years that I've been here, that we've been needing it. And hopefully that it can do that-
Yeah.
With the process of building the jail. You can't build a 200-bed. That's already antiquated. That's like building a two-lane road down here. I mean, they're already antiquated, you know? We need four lines at minimum. So.
And I said this at the last, last Commissioners' Court also, I'll say it again. This is not a, y'all have done a great job maintaining what you have. Your staff has done fantastic holding that building together, but there's only so much you can do, you know? Without a major investment.
It's, it's a, certainly a dilemma and a lot of thought needs to be put into it. And I appreciate, appreciate what you said about, you know, it's not your money. It's, it's not our money either. So we, we have to be mindful of that.
Yes, sir.
We also have to be mindful of the fact of how much we're spending monthly, annually to house people outside of the county. As an example, 2017, 18, 19, 20, and 21, five years. The average for those five years, for the checks that the county wrote for other counties to house our inmates during that five-year window is $349,000 plus. That does not, I repeat, does not include transferred officers, cars, salaries, benefits. None of that's included in that.
Per year?
That's strictly what we wrote checks for to other counties.
On an annual basis?
On an annual base, that's an average for those five years, $349,000 plus. We will bust, based on what I've already seen, this year, we're gonna bust that. We're probably gonna hit 351, you know, at the current rate, right now.
Well, and to put that into perspective, and even if it were $500,000 a year over five years, that's $2.5 million. That's significantly less than what we'd be paying for a building.
That's not, that's not backing out what it costs to keep them here either. We've gone through this little-
Right.
Deal and, you know, they're talking $50, $51 a day, $52 a day to send them out. And it costs about $48 a day to keep them here. So what we're really talking about is the delta on that part of it. But I agree with Mr. Wilson, uh, you know, we do have to transport them. It's, it's, it's extra in that regard. But it's, you know, that number is misleading in and of itself.
I guarantee they'll keep taking inmates either.
That's true. I, I agree.
What the future's gonna bring in that, Nick? It's, uh, there's no good options, doesn't look like. Well, there, there is not any option that's gonna save the county money. Uh, this is not a savings. This is not a revenue producer.
Absolutely.
This is the cost of the county-
Absolutely.
For the cost of dealing with inmates.
But yeah, so we need, what I think needs to happen, we need to put, we need to figure out what it's gonna be. Put it out there as a bond and let the voters decide. I mean, it's pretty simple.
Let me ask you this. Between the 85 and the 104, you only talk about $19,000. What are you getting for the additional $19,000?
So that's the work, so, so basically the first option, option A, um, the programmer's working without borders. He has no confines. Option B, he's working with the confines of that existing building. So they're gonna have to do some, some additional investigation in that existing space to figure out what they can and can't do with it.
I don't wanna put any more money in that jail. You think that we can keep the jail running for three years by just doing the maintenance that you've been aware of, that our maintenance-
We're gonna have to until we get something built. We have no choice for three years. It's beyond that. If we don't start today, it's gonna be more than three years, what you're telling us. It's gonna be three years before we get a jail. I mean, if we started today. And so that jail's gotta last or else we're gonna be transporting inmates. I think that's what you're saying.
Yeah, I mean, we would be looking at, again, it, it, you know, to me, the critical path on this is funding. How do you get your funding and when do you secure your funding?
Point.
Because you don't wanna pay for design until you're sure you can fund it.
Get the money.
And so that's gonna kick off-
Special bond election, they have to set that up or wait until next fall or spring for an election. But in the meantime, we could spend the money and do the programming as you've presented here, this programming portion of it.
And, and this, you know, this tells you again, how much you're gonna need.
How much you need to go get.
How much do I need to get, correct? Yeah.
Well-
And, and it doesn't go to waste. If you decide to build a jail in five years, you still have the programming done. If you decide to build one in 10 years, assuming the program hasn't changed, you still have the programming done. So unlike design, when you design a building, you can't sit that design on the shelf because building codes change. And in five years, it's outdated and now you're having to update it to the current building codes. Programming, you can set it on the shelf for just a little bit and it would be okay if you needed to.
If we went with the second option, looked to see that, would it cost us any more money proportionally? If we did the 200-bed jail with looking at saving some of the old jail? After we got the new 200-bed jail, we decide, nope, that old jail is not gonna work. We're gonna go ahead and build another 200. Because we're doing it in increments, would probably cost us more money, wouldn't you think? To do 200 at, at a phase, do 200 and then additional 200 new?
I would think so, cause the programmers are already gonna be halfway down the runway and then they're gonna have to scrap half of what they've done and, and go back to the drawing room.
Because we don't, we won't know how good it is to put money into the old jail until we do this programming.
Well, I, I, to me, they're two different things. To me, the, the, to me, the, the decision on whether or not you wanna put money into the old jail is just if you wanna be, you know, bound by what's there and you wanna be bound with an old aging building and an old aging structure that ultimately is not gonna last, you know? If you build an addition, that addition is gonna be built for 30 years. That renovation, even if you renovate it, is not gonna be good for 30 years. It may be good for 15 or 20 more years. And then you're gonna be having to do major remodel and renovations again. Because, you know, again, you're stuck with the bones.
Well, but today, we either are gonna make a decision or not between option one, option two, or neither. I mean, that's what's on the, that's what's on the court today.
Or both.
Or both, yeah. And you already told us that one.
That's an option, but yeah, again, it's just, it's, it's, it's more money when you know half of it's not gonna ultimately be used, but.
And, and, and the third option here that, you know, they have books and books with home plans in it and you go in there and you flip through and you go, I like this one, and you order a home plan. We could save the architectural fees and everything else by finding something that's already built. Talk to somebody, find something functional. Uh, I mean, is this an option?
It, it's an option, but they're still, the architects are still gonna get you. Again, I hope they're not listening today.
No, no, no. I mean, I'm sure, I'm sure they will, yes.
Yeah.
But I mean, you're talking about a lesser-
They're not going to give you plans from, because the architects own those plans.
Right, right.
It's not the entity. Johnson County or Erath County, they don't own the plans.
Right.
The architect owns them. So the architect's gonna go, yeah, I'll give you those plans, sure, but it's gonna, you know, cost you a little something, something. And then the minute you start making tweaks to it, they're gonna go, whoa, 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 wait a second. You bought a cookie cutter plan here. You wanna make changes, we can do that, but it's gonna cost you this much extra and this much extra and this much extra. And so.
You know, me personally, I would really like to explore that option. Let's take a look at it. See if there's some jail out there that somebody, that is, it functions well, that, uh, you know? Let's, I'm not ready to jump off with $85,000 to- On a maybe.
You said that we could get something done by the, before the end of the year. If we delayed it two weeks, would it, would your estimate change?
Um, it would probably push it back into the, the early part of the year. But if you're not against a hard deadline, then, you know, December 31st versus January 31st may not be critical for you. You know, ultimately, we were trying to get it done before the holidays just because we don't wanna deal with holiday schedules and, you know, trying to meet with end-users and people in and out of town and that's basically two weeks you lose.
Who's gonna go look at these new jails, you?
Well, I'm, I'm guessing the sheriff might wanna get involved in that. That, uh-
Get any jails out there you like?
You might wanna, you might wanna say something here too, so.
We have a purchasing agent.
With a sign, a sign out in front of it says model jail?
Yeah, there you go. Open house.
Got one out there that you like?
I've been to a few jails over the years, but a lot of them, all of them have been added on to. Johnson County, I think they've got five or six that they just keep building on and adding new buildings and everything. So the perfect jail, that's just one jail. Ask for the plans. I'm not aware of that without doing a whole bunch of looking. We need to, the other equation is, where's it gonna fit into the property that we own? We got that east impound lot that, you know, we can do something with, but, um, will a 400-bed jail fit there? I don't know. Uh, that's what the architect will have to really figure out. The other thing in this whole deal is the 25.5 million that was talked about two weeks ago. That, um, they're gonna have to have inmates moved out so they can fix the floors and fix the plumbing and all that. At today's cost, well, it's, what did I, uh, didn't bring my notes with me, but it's, it's like $10,000 a day at today's cost to move, um, all those inmates out. So that's per day, seven days a week. And as the costs are gonna go up, I guarantee it just because of food and things like that around the counties. I figured Somerville County was gonna charge us more, but we haven't seen a contract yet. But as time goes on, the cost is gonna go up and up and up. And then if we have to, there's no one jail that's gonna say, oh, I can take them all on. So we're gonna have inmates scattered all over the state of Texas and then I'm gonna have to have another bunch of vehicles and the jailers will be transport people, I guess, at that point, going back and forth across the state. So it'd be better not to mess with that jail that we got. Hopefully we can keep it going and build something new. I'm not an architect. I don't know the perfect floor plan, um, that hadn't been adjusted. There's some smaller jails, um, that wouldn't work cause they're smaller. At the end of the day, if we rebuild what we got, we still got 192-bed jail. So it's too small. We've been sending people out for all these years. So I don't know what the right answer is, um, but we need to do something pretty quick. I've been sending the court members, uh, you know, it's changed out over the years, but I've been sending the jail count out for, for all, all the years that I've been sheriff. And so the Commissioner Wilson brought up what it's cost us since 2017. Um, but there's been a lot more years before that that, um, figured out. One year, um, the court members gave me $750,000 to use and we didn't use it all that year, fortunately for this, so it ended up going to pay some other bills. But other courts have recognized that out-of-county prisoners are gonna take a lot of money. So we need to fix that and get them all back in the county or, or find some counties that'll be able to absorb that to send them there and then pay the, pay those monthly bills. So it's-
One point, in your predecessors, you know, when Harden was there, we had them actually in Millshew. I mean, that's how far we were having to transport officer, I mean, prisoners at that point. And that's more than a day round trip or right out of a full-day round trip for that.
So, and that's where the, the jails that are gonna have the space are gonna be, is west Texas where everything's shrinking, not east Texas or Metroplex cause everything's growing, um, as it is. So, yeah, we're gonna be transporting a long ways away out to west Texas. But I'm not sure where. Brown County, right now, is not taking people. So we're gonna have to go farther away than that. We're researching that right now, where we can go. I guess they're full. So, so we've got Erath County and, and Somerville that we're dealing with today.
It may be some kind, some kind of new, new facilities, what, that's what, just gonna be the whole card, cold hard facts.
I, I believe so. That way you're not messing with something that, there's still some unknowns. There's unknowns that, they looked into it pretty well, but they, they're still gonna be unknowns. And then the unknown part is, okay, it's gonna take us a little longer. We're gonna have to move inmates out a little longer. So that 25.5 million is now 30 million, minimum probably, for a year of out-of-county prisoners and it might go more than that. So that's to fix what we got. So a new building, get it going, that's probably the best use of the money. So. But I don't know what that would cost, what the perfect plan would be. The people that he named, um, DRG and, and those few, they've done a lot of jails, so they might have some good plans. Um, so we might be able to figure something out. So, but that I'm not sure of.
More money into that old jail. I don't like that idea at all.
Well, the whole building is, yeah, we had, 2001, I was in the building the day when the tariff fell on the roof. It was fixed, but, um, drains have had problems and, and then the, it's got a lot of problems. It is gonna have to be a lot more done to it than just fix some plumbing and fix some walls. So.
Make a motion for the 85. Let's do the 85. That's, that's, both people are, we've got two professionals here. I think both professionals here are saying, go with the new building. They should not put any more money back in that old jail.
What it's gonna cost us, so we can go determine how much money we need and then we decide how we're gonna get the money.
I do.
Or not get the money.
Take a motion here?
Commissioner- I propose that we approve and authorize the county judge to sign a proposal for option one, programming for a new law enforcement center county jail not to exceed $85,000.
Second?
Motion has been made by Commissioner Wilson to authorize the county judge to sign a proposal for option number one, program for a new law enforcement center county jail not to exceed $85,000. Second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion?
What, and what, just for the record, what fund is that to be you?
Uh, 101.
101.
101.
For Becky.
For Becky.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose?
Aye.
Motion passes four to one. All right. Thank you, thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Sheriff. Okay. Number 11. Discuss and take appropriate action to pass a resolution adopting the values and missions of TaxDOT's traffic safety campaigns and Hood County's Vision Zero Action Plan and encouraging all Tax 21 members to develop individual safety action plans in similar fashion to those of TaxDOT. Uh, I gotta put this down here and let me- TaxDOT in Hood County. What this is, I was talking to David Dean and do y'all know that most traffic fatalities happen on rural roads? And what this is, it's a mission statement that I copied from Dallas since they have the smartest guy right now, according to David Dean, who's head of Tax 21 doing this, about the promotion of road and mobility safety is a priority for all members of Tax 21. That this is a corridor that stretches 461 centerline miles across the state of Texas. And that, according to TaxDOT, traffic crashes in rural areas account for 51%, 51.04% of the state's traffic fatalities. And what this is, we're gonna be developing a safety program. So this is just a resolution saying, yes, we're in favor of a safety program to institute this. And he wanted me to go ahead and bring this up for a resolution that would state that transportation excellence for the 21st century here adopts the values and missions of TaxDOT's traffic safety campaigns and Hood County's proposed Vision Zero Action Plan. Once it has been adopted, we will come back here and discuss it here in Commissioners' Court. But this is just to show that everybody that's in this seven districts that are affected, that Hood County is in the leadership program, that we are saying, yes, we are all in favor of safety. Who is not in favor of safety? I mean, that's one of the big deals about these fatalities. The fatalities that happen here at Hood County, I think almost all happen along 377. So that's all that this resolution is. So I'm gonna make the motion that we adopt this resolution so that we can pass it and then start working on the priorities in the campaign to prom back here as part of the plan. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. We got a, Judge Masico has made a motion to adopt the resolution adopting the values and missions of TaxDOT and the similar fashion plans of TaxDOT in Hood County, second by Commissioner Cotton. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. That brings us to the last-